Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call to order this session of the Tacoma Park City Council. Will the clerk please call the roll?
One moment, Mayor Stewart.
Sure.
Sorry about that.
Recording in progress.
There we go. Mayor Stewart?
Here.
Councilmember Kovar?
Here.
Councilmember Jabala? Councilmember Kostic? Councilmember Siemens?
President?
Councilmember Smith?
Here.
Councilmember Circe?
Here.
Thank you very much. So tonight, unfortunately, I want to start off our meeting with a moment of silence to remember Mayor Kevin Ward of Hyattsville, who passed away yesterday. We received news today that it was from an apparent self-inflicted gunshot wound. And our sympathies and thoughts and prayers go out to Mayor Ward's family and the residents of Hyattsville. And I want to take this opportunity to also say that we know life is very difficult for so many reasons for people right now. And that if you do need help, please call. It's confidential support line 24/7. It's 1-800-273-8255. Again, it's 1-800-273-8255. And at this moment, I'd just like to take time, if we all can just take a moment of silence. Thank you very much. Proceeding, looking at our agenda moving forward. Next week is already February. It's February 2nd, and we will have our regular city council meeting beginning at 7:30. We'll start with legislative update, and then we have a voting session, the first reading ordinance approving FY 2022 budget amendment number three. We have two work sessions next week. One is on ARPA spending plan budget reconciliation. And then the other is our continued discussion of redistricting plan. Then on Wednesday, February 9th, we have our regular city council meeting. We will start with a public hearing at 7:30 on the redistricting plan. Have our legislative update and then move into our voting session, which will be the first reading ordinance approving FY 2022 budget amendment number three. And the first reading ordinance approving ARPA spending plan and budget amendment. We then also have a work session, which is a discussion of the redistricting plan and draft ordinance. And then on Wednesday, February 16th, again, we meet at 7:30. We'll start with our legislative update. Have a presentation of pavement condition report. Our voting session that night will be the first reading ordinance adopting a redistricting plan and the second reading ordinance approving ARPA spending plan. And we will have, we will continue our work then in a work session on the reimagining public safety task force recommendations. Those are our agenda moving forward for our meeting this evening. We have one addition at the beginning of the meeting right now is that we are going to be swearing in our Board of Elections members. And if Ms. Carpenter, do you want to recognize the members of the Board of Election before I swear them in?
I would like to do that. So tonight, we have a number of new members to the board. Ben Bellows, Angel Tabay, Trevor Perry Giles, Tim Andereg, Ed Margaret Morehouse. And then continuing members Curtis Antinucci and Matthew Ling. And we are very grateful to have them.
Wonderful. Thank you for coming tonight and for your service on our Board of Elections. All of our committees are very important, but I have to say, the Board of Elections puts in an awful lot of work. And given the last couple of years, and a lot of things have been going on, COVID and new things like vote by mail and everything. You all have, those of you who have been on the board before know all the work that has gone into that. And I thank those of you who have decided to sign up for this work. So with that, I ask you to raise your right hand and repeat after me. I say your name.
I, Tim Andereg.
Do you swear that I, do you swear that I will support? The Constitution of the United States?
The Constitution of the United States.
And that I will faithfully? Air true allegiance?
Air true allegiance.
To the state of Maryland?
To the state of Maryland.
And support the Constitution?
And support the Constitution.
And laws thereof?
And laws thereof.
And that I will?
And that I will.
To the best of my skill and judgment?
To the best of my skill and judgment.
Diligently and faithfully?
Diligently and faithfully.
Without partiality or prejudice?
Without partiality or prejudice.
Execute the office of Board of Election Members?
Execute the office of Board of Election Members.
For the city of Tacoma Park?
For the city of Tacoma Park.
In the state of Maryland?
In the state of Maryland.
According to the Constitution?
According to the Constitution.
And laws of the state?
And laws of the state.
And the Charter and Code of the City of Tacoma Park?
And the Charter and Code of the City of Tacoma Park.
Wonderful. You are now our members of our Board of Election. Thank you again very much for your service. All right. So next on our agenda, we have this evening, a public hearing on our American Rescue Plan spending proposals. You can see a link to the full plan on the city website. And let's see, I have the list of people who have signed up. And I will look to the city clerk and see if we have any changes. But the first person I have is Laura Heaven.
Ms. Heaven should be on the call. And if not, we could skip to Kaylee Gannoud, and I will see if I can assist Ms. Heaven.
Great. All right. Kaylee, I think you have the ability to turn on your video. And yeah, there you are. Go ahead.
Okay. Hi, good evening, Mayor. Good evening, councilmembers. Lovely to see everyone. My name is Kaylee Gannoud. I'm the Executive Director of the Tacoma Langley Crossroads Development Authority. We manage the Tacoma Langley Crossroads Commercial District in the city of Tacoma Park and serve as the Business Association for the 180 businesses in the crossroads. And I wanted to speak with you tonight about two recommended projects from the staff recommended ARPA spending plan. First, I want to address the 150,000 dedicated to grants for small businesses. This is a critical piece, arguably the most critical piece to the recovery of our small business community in the city. Our worry is that this line item is not adequately funded. The CDA and the OTBA worked very closely with the city's Economic Development Manager in 2020 on the citywide grant for businesses. And overall, that program had 63 applicants. And then if the next round of grants receives the same amount of applicants, 150,000 will barely cover 2,500 per applicant. We worry that this amount is not enough to make significant impact in the recovery of a business. We are requesting that the city council at least consider doubling funding amount for the grants for small businesses to 300,000 so that the program can offer grants at a minimum level of $5,000 per business. Secondly, I want to extend our support for the 500,000 dedicated to the Tacoma Langley Crossroads Business Incubator. We want the Tacoma Langley Crossroads Commercial District to be a welcoming and attractive area for the next generation of entrepreneurs. Perhaps the kids and grandkids of our current business owners, many of whom are fast approaching retirement age, or those who grew up in Tacoma Park or even Langley Park and are looking to return home with their new business concept. But the extremely high rents and the layout of our current commercial space inventory is not conducive to an emerging small business. We've already seen the difference that space at the weekly crossroads farmer's market has made for those businesses and the community. These funds will allow the city and their partners to create a more permanent market space for emerging entrepreneurs. And we know that progress towards revitalization and implementation of planning goals for the crossroads has been slow moving, primarily due to purple line delays that persist. But these ARPA funds give the city a unique opportunity to actively move forward these goals. And I really hope that the city will fully leverage this opportunity. And thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. Thank you for coming. I is?
This is available now.
Wonderful. We'll turn it over to Ms. Heaven then.
Hi, thanks. Sorry about that. Hello, my name is Laura Heaven, and I live in Ward III. And I appreciate the opportunity to speak, as well as all of the hard work that has gone into the plan. And I just want to share some thoughts on the overall goals, as well as one specific proposal. Overall, I believe it's critical to consider the impact each project will have on racial equity and whether or not the project will mitigate the disproportionate impact the pandemic has had on persons of color. In order to address the immediate needs of low-income individuals at risk of eviction and food insecurity, I am in favor of direct cash assistance, and I believe implementation of such a program needs to happen as soon as possible. Regarding specific project proposals, I want to echo the recommendations of the Reimagining Public Safety Task Force to create a community safety team using ARPA funds. While I'm encouraged to see a recommendation for mental health workers in the proposal, I believe these mental health workers should not be managed by the police department, but rather be part of the community safety team. In my professional life, I have the opportunity to work with people who conduct behavioral health outreach and crisis intervention in a neighboring jurisdiction. It's extremely beneficial for engagement with and trust between these folks and the individuals in crisis that the mental health workers are not associated with the police department. While it is sometimes necessary to coordinate and work together, it is essential that they are independent entities. I strongly support the proposal to fund two mental health workers, but I also strongly advocate that these mental health workers not be employed by the police department. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Heaven. Next. Let's see. Oh, I see Paul. Okay, you're up.
Mark Kristowski, 7708 Tacoma Avenue, on tonight, on behalf of Tacoma Stormwater Solutions. Good evening. I am here on behalf of Tacoma Stormwater Solutions to urge you to fund a strategic plan for stormwater resilience in the face of climate change. You have heard from your constituents how seriously the lack of strategic and holistic stormwater and flood management is viewed. With 200 respondents and more coming in, our citywide survey found that 79% of those surveyed have had stormwater problems for more than five years, and 40% have spent over $5,000 to manage stormwater. Scientific projections done for the city by Drexel University show that these problems are only going to become worse in the future due to climate change. Tacoma Stormwater Solutions, in collaboration with experts and stakeholders throughout the city, has developed and circulated a strategic plan proposal. This plan development and the assistance of Tacoma Stormwater Solutions has been undertaken at no cost to the city and no expectation of financial gain by its members. The plan is holistic in that it deals with rain and snowfall, surface water and groundwater on public, private, and institutional properties. It is inclusive in that it enlists a joint effort by the council as the Stormwater Board, city staff, city committees, non-governmental entities, and consultants to address the issue. Further, it aims to involve as many stakeholders as possible through public outreach efforts. The plan is also efficient in that it builds upon work that has already been conducted, leverages approaches developed throughout the region, and proposes an engineering pilot study approach, which will involve a small effort initially that can be expanded later based on what has been found to work. Given the current availability of ARPA money and the inclusion of infrastructure as appropriate for ARPA, we are asking you, the council, to give this proposal serious attention. Unlike many technical proposals dealing with water, this proposal involves matters of policy and even politics. The ultimate goal of this plan is to eventually provide sufficient stormwater management services to every affected property and business owner in Tacoma Park and to build resilience in the city through adaptation to increased threats of climate change. Let's work together to make this happen and position Tacoma Park in the forefront of the resilience movement. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Mr. Burn Kelly.
Good evening, Mayor and council. Nice to see you again, Jamal Fox. Nice to see you. We haven't met. I'm a Ward III resident, lived in Ward I, moved here in 1983, specifically out of DC, so I would have representational government. And I appreciate your service, every one of you who is in government. I know there's not a long institutional memory here. I see Terry Siemens and Cindy and on the council. And we go back further than most of you. And the institutional memory has a lot to do with what are we rescuing with ARPA? I saw and read the entire report, and I commend the job done by staff. But I don't see the concerns for maximizing the rescue. We have people who are in poverty. We have people who can't afford rent. And as Laura just said, we need to give them cash. And we have people who don't have internet, and that's just unacceptable. Paying somebody higher than the government median of Montgomery County of 103,000, the median income of Montgomery County, to administer ARPA should be the maximum. A $775,000 for one person over four or five years does not seem reasonable to me. The institutional memory forgets the community center, which I was on the steering committee for, was built over Brishir's Run, the same place where the library is. If you go within two feet of the floodplain with your footings, you can't build there. The reason there's a moat around the community center, the Sam Abbot Community Center, is because Brishir's Run was not recognized. We didn't get a gym. We got a $2 million cost overrun. Rescuing a library that's never been built, shouldn't be built where it's being built, could be down on the 7th Adonis property at the other end of Maple, after it becomes a green street, so it's easy to get to, is much better idea than rescuing a project that's already $2 million over budget. So there's $3 million there, right there. $3 million that should go not to rescue a future project, but go to stormwater management, feeding people, housing people, and getting people to be equal in the status quo of our city. Every citizen here, and I'm a small business person, I appreciate Langley Crossroads and others. We had a hard time through COVID. And I got some assistance from the city, and I was so grateful for that, you know? And that was really, in a pinch, a great thing. And I'm glad that happened. But we deserve to give everybody the rescue first and not give it to the library and not give it to one person. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. Let's see, Mary, you're next.
Good evening. I'm Mary Jack Sky. I'm a longtime resident of Tacoma Park, a first-time witness at the city council, president of the Board of Chair that many of you know about, member of the Presbyterian Church. I'm here as a concerned citizen. We all know that Tacoma Park contains the kind of economic disparity that we most often talk about as a national phenomenon. A great number of us did not, in fact, face direct and dire economic hardship from the pandemic. Work continued from home, salaries were paid, retirements continued. That weighs heavily on me, and I know it weighs on you. Our city's use of ARPA funds and our timing must reflect our awareness of that reality and the commitment that we show as a city in many other ways to take care of everyone. We need to act first and fast to address human needs. We all know that food distributions continue and other financial pressures remain for low-income families. I'm grateful that the council allocated substantial funds for urgent needs in the 2022 budget. But the fact that a large sum for feeding assistance has still not been awarded points to what we need to do now, which is get moving first off before approval of the whole plan on the human need priorities. Because normal implementation times, basically, can be long. And we should also quickly create a process, as others have already spoken to, for direct distribution, cash assistance. Other cities have contracted for processes to do that that cut through standard operating procedures. The primary question for me is not what is the sensible, well-ordered, two-year rollout for ARPA spending, but how we can be creative and responsive to unprecedented need and an unprecedented opportunity. I also want to urge you to invest ARPA funds, as Laura has spoken to already, to the, what was recommended by the Tacoma Park Task Force to reimagine public safety, which is to initiate the shift from policing to other more effective, appropriate responses to mental health crises. This is urgently needed infrastructure investment, laying groundwork for change. The funding is true, has a time limit of two years, but that's the space for learning and testing best ways to staff, partner, fund, and best utilize and coordinate with other community resources. This is a racial justice issue for sure. It's also an issue close to home for many families like mine who have faced the limits of our current health system. Thank you for considering my views.
Thank you very much, Mary. And I can't believe this is the first time you've spoken at a council meeting. I'm gonna check that. Thank you for coming tonight. Let's see, Fird, you're next.
Thank you. Good evening. Fird Hefner, Ward III resident and Tacoma Park Presbyterian Church member. Going to focus my remarks on direct cash assistance. But first, let me say I believe the focus of ARPA funding should be doing as much as possible, as soon as possible, to assist our neighbors in need, most especially low-income families reeling from the pandemic's economic fallout. Black and brown people have suffered disproportionately during the pandemic, on top of ongoing inequality. Racial equity should be centered in each and every decision the council makes on ARPA funding, period, full stop. We have been urging you to make direct cash assistance to low-income residents a centerpiece of the plan. Staff did a great job pinpointing Ward V and portions of Ward IV and VI as where there are pre-existing socioeconomic disparities that were exacerbated by the pandemic. They also noted that renters' median income is just one quarter of homeowners' median income, and that over three-quarters of renters are people of color. And yet, staff scored direct cash assistance quite low. I think it's critical for the council to understand why. So let's look at four significant areas of concern. First, direct cash assistance got no points for residential impact because it's targeted to the most vulnerable and not to the mostly white, well-off homeowners. If that criteria instead had been effective targeting to make basic human needs, it would have scored maximum points instead of no points. Second, staff gave direct cash aid no points for internal impacts because it would have negative effects on the city's ability to deliver services. This score is contradicted by the fact that the program would be administered by an accounting firm under contract with the city. Moreover, other more complicated proposals in the document score two or even four points for this criterion. There appears to be a double standard. Third, it also scores zero for cost. Yet, yes, it would be a costly proposal, but why does that alone result in a low score if the project is the most direct thing you can do to accomplish the aims of ARPA? Finally, it gets some points, but not maximum points for alternative funding sources because the staff evidently believes there's unspecified funding sources out there for this purpose. This concerns us because special unemployment benefits, childcare tax credits have recently ended, and direct federal aid, cash aid, ended a year ago. Unfortunately, the mayor's proposal for a guaranteed income pilot also scores low. The only difference between the two low scores is the pilot score is slightly less low because it's less complex and less costly. It's true, it would be less costly, but to say it's less complex than one-time direct aid boggles the mind. There's some misunderstanding. More importantly, both direct aid proposals are worthy projects that address the serious impact of the pandemic on the lives of low-income residents, as well as the bigger, long-term issue of racial equity and income inequality. The fact that these proposals fell to the bottom of the scoring system shows that the scoring system is faulty and should be used only as a rough guide in your deliberations. I urge you to put these two proposals at the top of your priority list. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Troy Jacobs.
Hi, can you hear me and see me?
Yes, we can. Yeah, we can.
See me. I want to thank everyone for the chance to speak tonight, and I'm Troy Jacobs. I'm a resident of Ward V, and I am supportive of the staff-recommended activities in the spin plan. Applaud the hard work that's gotten us to this point. I do hope that the remaining funds are not necessarily distributed equitably, but instead focus on the most vulnerable, poor, and address racial and ethnic disparities that others have spoken of. I do want to highlight one thing that has not come up, and that is that there is proposed funding for small business relief that's currently slated at 150,000, but possibly this needs to be increased to, I don't know, 300,000 or whatever. Because if this is for all the businesses throughout the city, it's going to be inadequate, I would think. In my ward, we have a number of businesses that are black and brown, immigrant-owned and operated, that have closed during COVID or have been straddled with incredible amounts of debt and back taxes. I mean, like 30,000 for one of the businesses in our area. And one of the things that we could do with this is actually focus this resource proposed activity to maybe Wards IV, V, and VI that have been particularly hard-hit. Originally, in the proposed activities, there was 500,000 for funding for small business relief for businesses hard-hit by COVID and purple line construction, but this was cut. And so I would hope that we can think about what we can do to further target this to those most in need or actually increase the amount of funding. I do speak to Business Incubator, and this is a really good effort that I would hope that we can support. It is a bit strange that it is focused, as it's written, on sort of young, first and second-generation immigrants. I believe that the opportunities would be appreciated by all age ranges of immigrants. And I would hope that our young immigrant residents have an array of educational and economic opportunities to fulfill their aspirations. I'm looking forward to further discussions on this, and I hope that everyone can be safe and healthy as we.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Jacobs. Thank you, thank you, Mr. Jacobs. Next.
I'm back.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah. Um, next, Wendy Lukart.
Good evening. I am here on behalf of Presbyterians for Police Transformation from Tacoma Park Presbyterian Church. I have lived in Tacoma Park, currently Ward One, for 21 years. You are to be commended for the ARPA spending plan's guiding principles. We especially appreciate the emphasis on economic assistance for the most vulnerable and racial equity. My particular interest is in your proposal for two mental health crisis counselors. Our research shows this kind of intervention has helped prevent the use of force and weapons that can otherwise result and has prevented many from cycling through the criminal justice and hospital systems, thus saving lives and millions of dollars. I believe you are probably all familiar with CAHoots, the mobile crisis intervention program created in 1989 by Whitebird Clinic and Eugene, Oregon. It has been replicated in Denver, Oakland, Olympia, Portland, and other cities. Features of their program that I commend to you for consideration are, one, a team made up of a crisis intervention worker skilled in counseling and de-escalation techniques, and a medic who is either an EMT or a nurse. This structure may allow you to get more bang for your buck and create two teams, since you are likely to already have access to EMTs. This pairing allows CAHoots to respond to situations that may be medical and psychiatric, such as suicide attempts. Sometimes the teams are paired with police as well. The second element to commend to you is well-trained dispatchers. CAHoots calls come through 911 or the non-emergency number. Dispatchers are trained to recognize nonviolent situations with a behavioral health component rooting those calls to CAHoots. Our dispatchers will soon have to coordinate with 988, the suicide prevention hotline that this July will morph into a nationwide 24/7 behavioral health crisis line. CAHoots can provide consultation for this degree of complexity, as can the Center for Justice and Mental Health Partnerships, operated by the Council of State Governments. The center offers free training and many resources to improve outcomes. Finally, I want to mention data collection and robust software. When I read that you were hiring an IT software analyst for document integration across departments, it made me wonder if this position would be involved with developing the dispatching system and if systematic data collection would be a component. My hope is that it will, and that subsequent analysis of this pilot would ultimately lead to sustainability, so crisis counselors can become a permanent part of our infrastructure with costs shared by the city and the county. Thank you for listening to the, to these ideas, and I urge you to include this mental health pilot in the final version of your ARPA plan and in subsequent budgets. I believe it will be beneficial to the mental and economic health of our community. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next, we have Diane Curran.
I'm sorry about that. Good evening. My name is Diane Curran, and I'm a resident of Ward Three and a member of Tacoma Park Presbyterian Church. As you decide how to spend your $17 million in ARPA funds, I urge you to consider these three historic texts. I'll begin with the oldest, the Book of Exodus. The people of Israel said, "You have brought the whole community out into the wilderness to die of hunger." Then Yahweh said to Moses, "Look, I will rain down bread from heaven for you." And from the city's racial equity resolution, the city council recognizes that issues of racial equity must be addressed proactively and deliberately in the course of decision-making to increase the success for all groups. Finally, from the White House, "The American Rescue Plan will change the course of the pandemic and will build a bridge to an equitable economic recovery and immediately reduce child poverty." The wisdom to take away. First, we are stewards of a great and rescuing gift. Make sure this gift is used expeditiously to address the urgent needs in our community. Second, use the gift to redress longstanding inequities in our community, not rainy day needs. Finally, be progressive and dare to use emerging strategies, such as direct economic assistance and guaranteed income. In practical terms, please take the following four key steps. One, approve your staff's recommendation of another $500,000 in eviction relief. The need remains high. Montgomery Housing Partnership's Fall Survey shows a delinquency rate of 20.5% in zip code 20912, one out of every five rental households and still far above pre-pandemic levels. Two, add another $250,000 for feeding assistance, which is not in the staff's plan despite having reviewed over 50 programs. Again, as we have heard from our partners at Small Things Matter and other organizations, the need for feeding assistance continues to be great. Three, invest in progressive programs for short-term relief and longer-term solutions to deep-seated racial and economic inequity, such as direct cash assistance and guaranteed income. Putting funds into families' hands and letting them set their own spending priorities is a proven way to reduce evictions and hunger. And finally, ensure that direct cash is distributed quickly and break the apparent logjam of previously approved but not yet distributed funds. The $250,000 for feeding assistance that we advocated for and won last summer has not yet been fully distributed. This situation should be corrected immediately.
Thank you, Diane. Thank you so much. Thank you. Um, just before we move on to the next speaker, I had an email that Ms. Priscilla Labwitz is having a problem getting the correct link, if the city clerk could.
Yes, I just reset her link, so hopefully she will be able to join us. And I wanted to point out that Mark Harper, who was an earlier speaker, has joined us.
Okay, so we should, we're going to go to Mark now?
Yes.
Perfect, Mark, you're up.
Thank you, and thank you for your patience. Good evening, Mayor Stewart and members of council. Uh, my name is Mark Harper. I'm the relatively new pastor at Tacoma Park Presbyterian Church, and I'm very grateful for the opportunity to speak with all of you tonight. And be not afraid. My, my contract with church requires that I preach on Sunday mornings, but not at council meetings. Tonight, I am simply here as a neighbor speaking on behalf of low-income and low-wealth neighbors who have been destabilized more than usual by the economic fallout of the ongoing COVID pandemic. Neighbors like William, who grew up in Tacoma Park. Just before Christmas, he lost his job, and he's been struggling to stay off the streets. While this past week, he landed a new job with a moving company, he was texting me just last night to see if it might be okay for him to stop by our church's free pantry to pick up some snacks to take with him to work in the morning. Now payday for William is still another week away. His life is one of the holy texts that I'm listening to, and I hope you will as well. I believe William would greatly benefit from immediate and substantial direct cash assistance from the first allotment of ARPA funds. He's trying to find a more affordable place to live, and that sort of funding would bring welcome relief to him along with sisters and brothers living in rent-subsidized apartments in our community. I know there are certainly other excellent projects on your mind that could be helped along by spending dollars in this first tranche of funding, but none, not one, in my opinion, are more urgent than meeting the immediate needs of our most vulnerable neighbors, those who are struggling to find affordable housing, enough nutritious food to eat, and resources for their mental health, struggles which are compounded by the systemic de-centering of black and brown people from our political imaginations. This is a belief shared by many other leaders in our local faith communities. I'm proud to be a signatory with them on a letter you received one week ago, urging you to allocate the full balance of this first portion of ARPA funding to assist low-income and other vulnerable residents of Tacoma Park. As Jim Wallace, a longtime pastor and advocate for the poor, once put it, "A budget is a moral document." Just as our personal checkbooks and bank statements sometimes speak more clearly than our words about what we value the most, I hope your coming decisions on ARPA funding will reveal a commitment that is deeply rooted in the sacred story of my tradition and even reflected in the lovely seal of this great city, that the light will shine on all of us when we focus our love and resources on those who are hurting the most.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Um, so next, we're going to Catherine, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Hi, um, thank you so much for giving me the opportunity to speak and for allocating a substantial amount of the ARPA funds to the emergency relief for our most vulnerable neighbors. Um, I'm here today to request that the full balance of the ARPA funds go to these needs, these basic needs of our neighbors, including food, healthcare, um, the mental health care that I've heard people eloquently, um, support, and also direct cash assistance for eviction relief and whatever the greatest needs of our neighbors. As I've heard on the school listservs, um, the PE teachers asking neighbors to donate coats and shoes to children who don't have them. So, um, just asking that we please prioritize those needs first. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Hubner is next, Paul. Can you unmute Paul?
Okay, there you go. Thank you very much.
Good.
Paul Hubner, Ward Three. I'm here to make some suggestions about the ARPA funds. As I watched the presentations made by city staff during two Zoom sessions on dispersing the $17 million-plus dollars in ARPA funds, I saw directors and managers weighing in lobby for more staff, salary increases, bonuses, more money, more capital projects, and more infrastructure. I understood these ARPA funds, our federal tax dollars, were sent down to the municipal and county level for distribution at the local level, where their money could be judicially spent on those most in need. Yet staff seems to be diverting ARPA funds away from the types of programs for which these monies were intended and instead towards mismanaged capital projects and pay increases for nonessential, non-frontline staff. City staff suggested using ARPA funds for infrastructure spending of another $2 million for the library project. This project has already recently been given an additional million or so dollars from state coffers. At a present cost of over $1 million in design alone, this project is ill-defined, it's in a floodplain, already burdened with costs having accelerated to near $12 million, with no present design and not one construction bid from a qualified contractor. Just another poorly managed capital project with serious and chronic cost overruns. This is not where emergency pandemic relief was designed to go. Another city staff suggestion was to spend $1.2 million for the police atrium renovation, a project that was scheduled for completion by fall of 2019. Again, this is a project unrelated to the pandemic. Does ARPA legislation actually authorize spending of this type on a project like this? Is this really the best place for ARPA funds now that mortgage relief has ceased and so many appear to face actual starvation or eviction? There's a letter signed by a dozen or so pastors, priests, and rabbis requesting more directed aid to those most needy in our community. What happened to that? Has it been whittled down needlessly? Put this money, our tax dollars, where it was supposed to go, towards those most needy in our community. In an NPR segment Monday morning, it was revealed that just $300 a month in cash distributions dramatically improved early childhood development and well-being in underserved populations. As we know, those underserved populations are even in more dire straits as a result of the pandemic. I heard recently that if small things matter were given just $3,000 a week, they could provide food for families at the two distribution centers at the Co-op lot in Presbyterian Church. That's $157,000 for a year. Let's allocate the money to where it belongs.
Thank you, Mr. Hubner. Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, next, Rebecca, you're up next.
Good, good evening, Mayor Stewart, members of city council, Mr. Fox and city staff. Uh, I'm a Ward Two resident, and I appreciate, again, this opportunity to offer thoughts on the expenditure of ARPA funds. There have been a lot of good ideas already shared. I'm going to focus on two aspects of the staff plan. And you, you've heard, some of these are going to be familiar based on other statements. These are cases, instances where I would invite further reexamination of funding proposals. Uh, the first is, the staff plan anticipates $2 million for a library expansion, as has just been noted, and $1.2 million for organization of the area around the emergency dispatch operations. I'm going to start on the latter. I join with others in supporting mental health counseling, but administratively separate from police operations. That means we do not house city counseling sites next to city police headquarters. Uh, someone with better insight than I noted some years ago that our community is home to many immigrants, including refugees fleeing violence and corruption in their home countries. And unfortunately, the sources of violence and corruption they are fleeing can include the police. We hold ourselves to higher standards here, but maybe we don't need to continue to focus so many city programs and certainly not add new programs directly above or adjacent to police headquarters. It's also the case, as has been noted, that the building has suffered from citing and construction woes over the years. This leads me to the library. And please understand, my family is one that has enjoyed and used the library for many years. But could we not move some resources and programs into sites like the recreation center on New Hampshire or into schools? I don't mean to dilute the programs we already have at Maple in Philadelphia, but perhaps we could, we need to expand opportunities in locales that are closer to our neighbors in need. My last point will be very short. The staff plan also anticipates setting aside $1.5 million as a contingency fund. Here, again, I ask you, the leaders of our community, to consider getting a greater proportion of ARPA funds out sooner rather than later. I am not saying that some rainy day funds could not serve the same goals eventually, but let me be very blunt. When we set aside contingency funds, we withhold those monies from serving critical human needs here and now. Thank you for your time and attention.
Thank you. Next, we have Priscilla Labwitz. Oh, Priscilla, you're on mute.
Sorry. Good evening, Mayor Stewart and members of the council and Mr. City Manager. Thanks for letting us talk. I want to, I'm here today, I live on Burch Avenue, but I'm here today as the president of Lunch, Tacoma Park Lunch and Learn. You all know and have loyally supported Lunch and Learn for years. It fulfills our community goals of racial equity and supporting youth. And the program would die without you. Um, this, the program is not just a summer day camp, but it provides academics as well as fun for elementary school students from low-income families in Tacoma Park, most of color. To prevent, and we, we do this to prevent their falling behind academically over the summer and to help them catch up after COVID closings of schools and virtual classes, which have left a lot to be desired. We want to expand to reach more kids, and Lunch and Learn has had to, has had to turn children away. We are asking that you develop a process by which nonprofits like Lunch and Learn can apply for ARPA funds. You don't have to reinvent the wheel. This, uh, there is a procedure already. The, um, there's a, a website, I think I've sent this to most of you, but called MarylandNonprofits.org, and it has, it's a kit and gives all of- and gives all of the ways to set that up so that we can, um, apply for some of these ARPA funds. And we, please help us to expand Lunch and Learn. We have to turn children away. Um, and we need to help these children. And this is a Tacoma Park program that know that we get some money from the county, but essentially half of our budget comes from Tacoma Park. And there's nobody, we have no, um, we have no, uh, rich members of the board to, to raise money. So please help us to apply for ARPA funds. Thanks.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Um, next, uh, we have Ms. Mary Jane Machui.
Hello.
Hi, Mary Jane. Go ahead.
I can't start my video. Okay, where am I? Oh, there I am. Hi. Hello, everybody. Uh, I'm getting tired. Uh, I wish I didn't have to come here almost every time, but here I, here goes. I'm going to ask for these things and I'm pretty sure you're not going to give them to me, but I'm going to keep asking because I get depressed when I don't do anything. First of all, I, I, I believe we should give reparations for black Americans born in the U.S. who make less than sixty thousand a year. And it shouldn't be without any thing tied to it. They should just get it, period, because I think black Americans are tired of being told, we're going to give you money, but you have to use it for this or that. I think you should just give each of them money, okay? Second of all, supportive housing for adults with disabilities that affect their brains and who make that less than sixty thousand a year. These two groups, I believe, are the most vulnerable people. And some of them are both, like my son, in this, in this town and actually probably the whole United States. And why, they need help. My, I have been told, oh, I started Parents Especially as Adults five years ago over, and nothing much is done. You, a lot of you'll come to our meetings and thank you and listen to me, but you don't do anything, especially for housing. Uh, we live day by day, me and my son, he's thirty-seven years old. He lives in this house. He shouldn't be living here. He's thirty-seven. He's failing to thrive, but I, I can't, we can't afford it. He lives, he makes eighteen thousand a year. I may, together we'll make forty-five thousand a year. And by the way, we're what, we are low-income homeowners and we live day by day. And I just pray every day that our house doesn't leak or something like that, Major, because I can't afford it. I think you should be consideration for us, not just the renters, okay? We have to have, we have to pay for utilities and we have to pay for, for repairs, which is a big thing. Anyways, but first of all, five years ago, you said, uh, Tacoma Junction, you'd have a housing for us. I, I was told by city officials that you would. I was told by MDC you would. Duh, did it happen? No. We, we keep forgetting us. Second of all, they were told New Hampshire Avenue, the building. Ms. Lindler suggested that we could use that before she was still here. Did it happen? No. They forgot about us there, too. Third of all, habit, supposedly Habitat for Humanity even came sit three times to my house and wrote diagrams, and all of a sudden they just dropped. And we're, they aren't going to build a basement, a small area for my son. No, why do you keep forgetting us? Please, please. Oh, by the way, I still like dogs and, and animals. And I like, uh, thank you for the police department because I see you have a program that's only lasts till the twenty-ninth through the twenty-ninth to collect odds and ends and blankets for animals, it's from animal shelters. And thank you for that. Actually, the police department has been the most responsive to us. And anyways, thank you all. Have a good evening.
Thank you, Ms. Machui. Um, that concludes the public hearing on our ARPA, um, spending. We'll now move on to, uh, public comments on other matters. Um, and Ms. Carpenter, I see, um, Ms. Jessica Landman came up, but I have two speakers before her. Are they not?
Right. Mr. Cardamone has just, is not going to speak this evening. And, uh, Ms. Portillo is not here.
All right. So then Ms. Landman, it's, you're, you're up.
Thanks, Ms. Stewart, and thank you, everybody, for switching gears. I'm Jessica Landman from Ward one. Uh, there are two things I want to speak with you about quickly this evening. The first is tomorrow's, uh, planning board hearing about the Tacoma Junction. I want to, at first, express my appreciation for the city's letter calling for the planning board to deny any conditional approvals for this project and to honor the city's unanimous vote recommending that the design be rejected. That's pending before the planning board. It is a matter of respecting the autonomy and the opinions of our city for the planning board to listen when the voters of Tacoma Park speak to them through our elected officials. And I know that a number of people do plan to speak and to participate in the hearing tomorrow. And I am also looking forward to the city being outspoken tomorrow as well, just standing up for us. Because at the last hearing, as I'm sure you know, if you listened in, the planning board chair felt free to opine about what he felt was best for Tacoma Park. And it was not in line with what we, the residents and voters, felt was best, as was reflected in the planning, in the resolution that you adopted unanimously. So I thank you in advance for making sure that our voices are heard loud and clear at the planning board tomorrow. And speaking of our voices, that brings me to the second matter that I wanted to raise with you tonight. You've been discussing public participation in your own proceedings, and I think that you're going to vote tonight and about, are about to eliminate any option for members of the public ever to request longer than five minutes to address you, no matter how significant the issue or how much expertise they might have or how many people they might be speaking for. And I posed the question, why is that necessary? I'm fairly active, uh, in civic life and I attend council meetings fairly often, and I have not seen this provision of council procedure abused in the past, far from it. Uh, my guess is that it has maybe consumed twenty minutes of your time over the past year or two in total when I participated in council proceedings. So, um, I think that removing that provision, um, sends a very negative signal to the public, that public participation is a nuisance and needs to be cut short. I would very much like to know why that change is proposed and who requested it. I strongly urge you to restore that text in the procedure, procedural rules and allow for occasional extended presentations. Instead of cutting it, lay out the welcome mat for people who want to come and share facts or opinions or creativity with you and with the rest of us. Thank you, and I yield back the remainder of my three minutes.
Thank you, Ms. Landman. And actually, if you hold on one second, um, I want to clarify your last request. Um, the city council actually voted last week on the council procedure document. There was a request to clarify exactly what we voted on and the process moving forward. Um, so what we voted on in the council procedure document contains this language. If a speaker believes that he or she requires more than three minutes to complete their comments and that the additional information cannot be provided in written form, the commenter should contact the mayor at least twenty-four hours before the meeting to request permission for an additional one or two minutes, which is basically the process we have had. Um, that's what was voted on last week, um, by the city council in our council procedures. Um, so it is basically the same process we've had to date. If any council member would like us to revisit that section, uh, we can do that. Um, just, you need to request it of me and we will put a work session on and we can, um, re, um, review that. I know there may have been some confusion last week, um, but that is what now stands, and that is our process. We did discuss last week, and this may be where some confusion came in, um, extending public comments, um, and changing other things about public comments. But as we received, um, uh, guidance from our city attorney, the recommendation was to look at the charter and code first and fix them, um, on public comments, um, because they need to precede changes, um, that may happen in council procedures. So that is what's now was voted on last week and how we will continue to do it. And I think that information is still up to date on the, um, which one, on the city website. So that, um, brings up, um, that concludes our public comments for this evening. Um, another change that we had last week, uh, Councilmember Smith's recommendation was put in is that when we turn to council comments, which we are turning to now, that council members keep their comments to three minutes. Um, so, um, I will now turn to, um, oh, no, actually, first, we have legislative update. I forgot, we're in session, Annapolis, we have, and, and I will not limit you to three minutes. If you'd like to take four or five, please do. And Suhani is with us.
So, so, so actually, you know, this might be the last night that I say, nah, I don't need, uh, three minutes. Um, so good evening, everybody, and C-Cod with Public Policy Partners. Um, just to, to give you the, the, the quick, um, context of where we are in session. Um, the, um, deadlines for the introduction of bills is coming up at the very end of next week and the following Monday. So over the course of the next, uh, uh, week and a half, we are going to be inundated with legislation. Uh, we are expecting, um, a very high number of bills by the end of the introductory period. So, um, most of the priorities that, uh, the city, uh, has identified in advance have not been, uh, introduced yet. Um, although, you know, for example, if, if we want to talk about some of the environmental pri- priorities for the city, uh, there are a awful lot of environmental bills that have already been introduced. Um, so there's a lot that's being discussed, um, uh, around really trying to figure out uh, what the, the, what really fits within the, the priority framework of, uh, the city council? Um, and what are the bills that really, uh, you know, seem to be, be the ones that are going to be, um, uh, you know, seriously considered, the ones that, that are going to be worth really spending a lot of time working on? It doesn't mean that we don't support bills that we don't think will pass, but, um, uh, you know, it's, it's about trying to prioritize, uh, to use the city's resources most appropriately. Um, so with that said, um, uh, you know, there's a number of bills like, uh, the Just Cause, uh, legislation, um, traffic safety, uh, climate change, climate solutions. Um, those bills, um, are, are still to come. So, uh, we'll have more to say about those in the coming meetings. Um, I did want to mention that the governor, um, introduced his budget, as I reported last week. Um, I can, uh, respond to Councilmember Smith's question from last week about the highway user revenues. Um, the governor has included, um, the, it's, it's actually a very slight increase over, um, last year, uh, the total amount appropriated in the budget. Uh, and he is also proposing to, um, extend, make permanent, um, the enhanced rate um, that, that they've had, uh, for the last few years. So we'll, uh, we'll see where that goes. The governor has introduced his legislative package. It includes, uh, tax cuts, a lot of healthcare and healthcare workforce-related bills, um, and, uh, some, uh, some transportation bills. So we'll be looking closely at those, those just, uh, were released, I think, yesterday. So, um, so we'll be reviewing all of those and identifying what might be the priorities for the city.
Well, thank you very much for that update and, um, we look forward to getting all those bills soon. Thank you very much. All right, our, now we will turn to council comments. Um, and again, we are beginning this week to, um, limit council remarks to three minutes. Um, who would like to start? Councilwoman Kostick.
I can do it. I think I can do it in three minutes. Um, thank you. First of all, just want to thank everyone for your comments, uh, during public comments. It's very helpful to hear from everyone about, um, ARPA in particular, really helpful comments people gave tonight and have been sending in emails and, and have been having a lot of great conversations. So appreciate that. Um, I, I appreciate the mayor and the, the public comments, um, clarifying the, um, the, the vote last week regarding public comment timeframes. I admit, it, it was my mistake. I thought we had made a change to the, um, the resolution we were voting on to remove the option to, um, go above three minutes. And that, that had been what I proposed earlier, um, and that's still what I support doing. At this point, I think, from my perspective, it makes sense to wait, um, and, and combine further discussion on that with, to, um, the point where we, uh, look into the Charter Amendment to, um, increase, um, the opportunities for public comment at other meetings. So I think, um, I'd love to see us come back at that point and revisit what we're doing with regard to public comments then. Um, and, and love to have some conversations with my colleagues to see what they're thinking as well between now and then. Um, and then finally, I have had a number of neighborhood meetings and I have a few more coming up to speak with residents about redistricting. And I've gotten some really helpful feedback. I really appreciate the people who've been coming. I'm holding a meeting tomorrow evening with the Jefferson Lincoln Carroll neighborhood and next week on Tuesday evening with the BF Gilbert neighborhood. So looking forward to talking with all of you and, and others. If you're not able to attend a meeting, please feel free to contact me, um, directly and share your thoughts. Um, and I look forward to hearing your feedback on all of that. Thank you. I made it with a minute to go.
Thank you very much. Uh, Councilwoman Dabbala.
Thank you. Yeah. So thanks to everybody who came out. Um, and all the people who emailed me about ARPA and redistricting. I appreciate it. Um, and thanks to the sixty-four volunteers who showed up on Saturday to work on Tacoma Woods. For those of you who commented, I'm going to ask the city manager to just say again during your comments about the food security grants that have been released, uh, because there may be some confusion about the fact that they have already been, um, authorized. Uh, and I'd like to take the rest of my time to say that there have been three regional meetings in the last week that I've been to. Chesapeake Bay Climate, uh, group of the, of the Metropolitan Cod talked about infrastructure bill, including stormwater. Anyone wants the slides, just email me. I've sent them around to city staff already. Um, the Energy and Environment Committee of the Council of Governments met today to talk about the, the, the Transportation Planning Board. Final report, um, it, it, there were some concern that it's a little too road-oriented. And we're working on a letter to the Transportation Planning Board from the Cod Committee, identifying the alternatives that we think would be best um, in pursuing greenhouse gas emission reductions in the transportation sector. Um, and there was also a National League of Cities meeting, uh, Energy and Environment, once again. Um, again, talked about the infrastructure bill and what's in it for local governments. Um, so that's it for me. Just wanted everyone to be caught up on regional and, and national activities. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, next, Councilmember Smith.
Uh, first, uh, I, I want to mention that, um, the reason I brought to my colleagues the three-minute limit for council, I, I want to respect the fact that if we're going to require residents, uh, to only be able to speak for three minutes, then we should be held to the same standard. Uh, we'd like to thank, uh, all the residents who came out and gave remarks this evening. I appreciate, uh, residents calling on the council to, uh, make allocations from ARPA, uh, to the most vulnerable as soon as possible. I appreciate the, um, comments from, uh, the pastor from Presbyterian Church. I've worked with some of their, um, colleagues at the, uh, National Organization, almost on a daily basis, trying to help the most vulnerable in this country. Uh, it is disheartening that we have not found a way to actually get, uh, cash payments to people, uh, as soon as ARPA, uh, became available for the city to come apart. Um, and I would just like to end by saying that this is, um, a unique opportunity for all of us to do something really, really good, historic, legacy-type-making. Um, and that would be by actually putting money into people's pockets that are desperately in need, uh, with, uh, basics. Basic support. And it is amazing the number of low-income people that live in this city and we are not actually. Doing everything possible to help them during this unprecedented time with the pandemic and. Cutting of unemployment benefits and. The Supreme Court throwing out the protections of evictions. We are the, the last stop for residents and we should be helping.
Thank you, Councilmember Smith. Councilmember Kovar.
Thank you, Mayor Stewart. I want to, first of all, thank all the people, as my colleagues did, who. Spoke this evening in the public hearing and I was really impressed that maybe about a third of them had some connection to the Presbyterian Church and. That's no surprise to me because I know the members of that body have always been very active socially in terms of. Social justice as well, but it was heartening to have their comments and I look forward to discussing all of those issues this evening. And as we continue. With the ARPA work in particular, I would like us to continue discussing what the options might be for direct assistance. Also for. Stormwater infrastructure work and in addition for grants to local nonprofits. I think all three of those are. Well worth us seeing whether we can incorporate those into the work that we're doing on ARPA. Two other things, just two thank yous. Appreciate the many Ward One residents who took the time to join in the. Redistricting meeting that I had organized for Ward One on Thursday of this past week. It was a good discussion and helpful to me to hear people's perspectives. And then also thanks to those who, I believe one of my colleagues mentioned it as well. Thanks to those who participated in the cleanup at Tacoma. Woods. I was out there for an hour or so and I think. When all the different materials were brought up from the valley area down in the woods. There was enough to create probably almost an entire car. There was battery. There was a hood. There were multiple tires. There were other kinds of. Pieces of sheet metal and so on. Not really sure how they all ended up down in there, but I think it was a worthwhile thing and glad that the. Organizers from the local MLK Tacoma Park MLK Committee were able to. Put that together with county support and, and city involvement as well. So thanks to everybody who was involved in that.
Thank you. Next, Councilwoman Circe.
Good evening, everyone. First, I just want to thank everyone for coming out and sharing your thoughts regarding the ARPA dollars. The level of attention that everyone is providing and insights has been extremely helpful. And many of the points that were raised, I share. You know, one thing that was brought up and definitely want to make sure that I go on the record in support of is additional funds to go towards. Businesses, making sure that we're able to increase the amount of grant funds that are made available for businesses in the community. I want to echo Councilmember Kovar in terms of making sure that we have funds that are set aside that would allow for us to. Provide nonprofit organizations in our community that are doing other types of service. That includes like childcare programs and alternative childcare programs like Lunch and Learn are eligible to apply for. And definitely, definitely, definitely appreciate all of the thoughts that were shared around our mental health counselors and. You know, this is going to be something that is going to be. You know, the pilot is, is a pilot and I think the devil is always in the details in terms of how. We structure the pilot to make sure that we're not only meeting the goals of the city, but. Keeping in mind and, and working in accordance to a number of the recommendations that were made as part of the Public Safety Task Force. So. Definitely look forward to us continuing to have those discussions as well. And so the only other thing that I want to bring up is, so I was very happy. To hear that the Maryland Department of Transportation, as well as the Maryland Urban and Community Forest Committee. Has established an urban tree grant program. Which I think is like, wow, I guess our testifying and Laura Chakuti and it worked. So there are grant dollars that are available there for tree planting. So for, for building the urban tree. Or is back related to transportation projects and the applications must meet requirements provided. And be submitted by February the fifteenth. So just want to make folks aware that we do have that now. We just received notification that that has gone live. So thank you all so much for all of the continued advocacy that was done to try to make sure that trees that are cut down. Due to transportation projects, namely the Purple Line, there are resources available to plant new trees. So thank you. Have a good one.
Great. Thank you, Councilwoman Circe. I have a couple of updates. And one, I want to extend my thanks to everyone who spoke tonight and particularly on. The potential for putting funds towards a guaranteed income or direct assistance program. And the mental health counselors as well. To build on that, just wanted to update folks that. Councilmember Kovar, Dabbala, myself and representatives on the city staff continue to meet with Adventist Healthcare. To go over council questions on their proposal. To open a primary care and provide behavioral health services in the community. And so. Some of these things dovetail and are, are connected to each other and we, as Councilwoman Circe said. Some of this work that we're funding through, or hopefully will fund through the ARPA dollars will be on a pilot basis. So trying to figure out how to structure all these things. And there are a lot of moving pieces and I really appreciate the public comments this evening. The other thing which is also related is, as many people know, a number of years ago. We started meeting with school principals on a regular basis. I met with them with representatives from the Police Department and the Rec Department and talked to the principals about needs that they have. We talked about the ARPA spending and two things that did come up was tutoring programs. And mental health as well. So providing young people with mental health services. And so that was a good conversation. It was good to connect some of our newer rec staff with our area principals. The last thing I have for this evening is I want to thank Councilmember Siemens. For raising the issues of the residents who were displaced or being impacted by a fire. On Maple Avenue a couple of weeks ago and to commend our city staff, Director Alex Cross and Grace Wiggins. For all their work to make sure that the families who have been displaced, which is always a hardship. But have found accommodations. Which are much better than the ones that the county were going to provide, I will just say. And it took a great deal of persistence on. Their behind, on, by their part, on behalf of the residents. There's still a great deal to do. But I just want to recognize the staff and all the work they did. And I will now turn it over to our city manager.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and members of council. I, I like to echo the mayor's last point. And so. I'm not going to touch that since you've already addressed that, Mayor. The second thing that Councilmember Dabbala just asked me to address the food insecurity and. We have made the announcement and notified the awardees of the Food and Security Awards. And right now, our team has been working with the awardees, which has been four. To start working on contract language and coming to terms around the contracts. That hopefully will be, come to terms with in the next week or so. And then they will be out doing the good work of the community to be able to help food distribution and those around SNAP. So that's, that's the update there. And there's two tracks. Like I said, one on food distribution and one on SNAP. The second thing tonight, Madam Mayor, members of council, I just want to publicly announce where my staff were very excited. We just went into, again, a collaboration with the county. And we will be hosting COVID nineteen testing at the Recreation Center for the month of February. So there's walk-ins, welcome. Appointments are optional. You do not, it doesn't require any government ID or any doctor's orders. Testing is free. And it takes people of all ages. And so you'll start seeing within, it should be posted now or shortly. See it in social media, see it on our website. But we will start next Wednesday. February second will be the first date for the testing. With that, Madam Mayor, turn it back over to you.
Thank you very much. So now we'll move into our first. Our voting session tonight and we have a resolution authorizing the city manager to execute national settlement agreements with. Jansen and the distributors in the opioid litigation and Maryland subdivision agreements. I know it's the city manager. Oh, our city attorney is here. All right. Mr. Cromer, because I didn't know if you wanted to speak to this.
Thank you, Mayor. Very simply put, it is precisely what the mayor indicated. The resolution is. And this will allow the city manager to continue going through the process of executing these documents. And also provide. The opportunity potentially to access funds in the future. And more than anything else, this is, there's a lot of uncertainty surrounding. This process, given the way it's happened at the national level and trickled down to the states and the local subdivisions. And we want to make sure. That to the extent possible, we have this papered as well as we can going forward.
Thank you. Would someone like to move the resolution? Councilmember Siemens, do I have a second? Councilmember Circe. Councilmember Kovar, do you have a question?
Yes, one question and perhaps the city attorney could respond or maybe the city manager. One of the inquiries I received from resident in Ward One. Was what the money would be used for. Now it's too soon for us to make that determination today because we don't even know. How much there would be and how much we'd be in line to receive. But can in a sentence or two, there be a description of the kinds of uses that are anticipated. For these funds, to the extent we do end up receiving.
So I'll, I'll take the first crack at that, Councilmember Kovar. We, we just want to make clear that all of that is governed by the terms of the National Settlement Agreement, which can be found online. It's six hundred plus pages long. But the, the current understanding, and it's still fluid, is it has to be related. At least one portion of it has to be related to opioid abatement type programs. And, and that's, that's about as far as I would want to go with saying what it may be used for at this point. But I would also say that some of it may get fleshed out a little bit more as the process goes forward. I don't know if the city manager wants to add to any of that.
Yeah, I, I think the city attorney hit it on the head. It's, it's for the opioid remediation programs and policies and. And we'll, we'll know more soon. So I, I wouldn't want to opine either on the different types of programs until, until we have more information.
And I'll just say, because it was six hundred pages was why I was asking the city attorney rather than trying to find it myself. But I, but I appreciate the information. Thank you.
Okay. Seeing no other hands, will the clerk call the vote?
Councilmember Kovar.
Aye.
Councilmember Dabbala.
Yes.
Councilmember Kostic.
Yes.
Councilmember Siemens.
Aye.
Councilmember Smith.
Yes.
Councilmember Circe.
Aye.
Did you call on me?
No.
I really want to be voting on. Yes. We want to make sure we do this right. All right. So that was everybody. A yes on that. Thank you very much. Thank you to the city attorney for keeping track of all of this. That concludes our voting session for this evening. We will now move to our work session. We have two items this evening. The first is a work session on a budget amendment and I believe, am I turning this over to Deputy City Manager Clark or? Yes. Okay. Ms. Clark.
Good evening, councilmembers and Madam Mayor. So the net impact of this third budget amendment of. Fiscal year twenty twenty-two. On the general fund, we had a combination of slight revenue reductions as well as cost increases totaling. Two hundred and seventy-nine thousand, four hundred and fifty-eight. That was offset by cost decreases of a hundred and sixty-five thousand. In our capital improvement plan under the general fund for a total of a hundred and fourteen thousand, four hundred and fifty-eight. In net impact. Highlights of the budget amendment, and I'm happy to pull up the table if needed, if council members have specific questions. Are increasing the scope of the Public Space Management Plan Consultant Contract. Also rightsizing the city attorney budget and then. Delays on certain equipment purchases that can be postponed to the next fiscal year that aren't needed in this fiscal year. And then. Allowing for appropriation of grants, two grants, one received by the Tacoma Park Library from the NAACP. Called Communities for Immunity that our library staff will be using to combat vaccine misinformation. And then a state award for the New Avenue Bike Way Section B Final Design, as well as the city match. So if councilmembers have any specific questions on that, let me know.
Can, can you elaborate on, on what right size the city attorney's contract means?
So I, you know, I think our demand for legal services has been high. It was high last year with the various challenges of the pandemic. As well as other happenings in the city. I think it's going to be high again this year. So we've probably been underestimating that budget. We'll be careful in the upcoming budget process to think about the real need for those legal services in the city. But you know, we're, our budget amount was not sufficient to, to meet the demand for legal services, both from council and from city departments.
And how much? What, what was the big, what was the delta? What was the change? I mean, was it a hundred thousand dollars?
Two hundred. It was a hundred, a hundred and seventy thousand dollars.
Okay.
One of the things the city attorney has raised in our monthly meetings is. The increase, and it's not just for the city of Tacoma Park, but across the board of. Requests for information, PIA requests that municipalities are seeing across the country. From either media outlets or other places. So. We've had a lot more of those over the, in addition to COVID and other things. That is one of the things that is taking up more of the city attorney's time.
And Ms. Clark, can you be so kind? Can you remind me, what was the first thing you talked about?
The, so the Housing and Community Development Department just put out an RFP to hire a consultant. To develop the cities, to develop a proposed public space management plan, conduct community engagement around that. With the goal of having a final plan by this fall.
Okay, and that's, I haven't had a chance to, to read it, but is it going to be similar to what was done? With the organization that did the community engagement over on New Hampshire Avenue for the rec.
Revision. That was definitely part of it. That was part of the preliminary community engagement and, you know, Director Cross isn't on this evening, so I'm sure he'll, he'll talk more about this in future. Work sessions, but we're at the point now where we really need a consultant to sit down with our planning staff and really. Get down to the task of developing an actual plan based on the community feedback that our staff did such a great job in hosting those workshops and, and getting for us and that. The data collected from that, those sessions will be provided to the consultant to help them develop the plan. But the, we're going to get a draft plan first and then do more community engagement.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Great. Councilwoman Dabbala.
Yes, thank you. Following up on that public space plan, so. I saw the amount of money that would be transferred from the capital budget to the. General fund to do the contract. And then I thought I understood. general fund to do the contract, and then I thought I understood that some of that is an increase. And so what I'd like to know is how much is the increase over what we had budgeted in the first place for this project?
Sure, so the increase is about $15,000, and that was taken from the Bus Shelter Improvements line in the capital improvement plan, which we won't fully spend this year. And that was, again, you know, Director Cross felt that we needed a broader scope for the consultant to include more deliverables as well as more community engagement, but I'll, I'll let Director Cross speak to that more, in more detail the next time he's in front of council.
Okay, and thanks. And then my next question is on the, the cameras, the camera for the police vehicle. We proved the police vehicle. I thought that it included some outfitting of the vehicle, maybe I misremember. And so now we have somewhere for a camera. Could you just please explain that?
So it wasn't equipped with the camera, so there, there were some outfittings, but it, it lacked this piece of equipment, which is needed and standard outfitting for all of our vehicles.
And why it was not included in the first place?
It, it should have been. So, so we're, you know, getting it in now.
Anything else, Councilman Dibala? You done?
Yes, I am. I hit the wrong button.
Okay, that's okay.
I meant to say, I will repeat what I said, which is thank you very much for your, for your straightforward response, and I'm done.
Councilman Kostic?
Thank you for the information. Just two relatively small questions. One, I noticed the reduction for the, the delay in starting the stipend for the council-appointed committees, and I was just wondering where that process is in terms of giving stipends to, to our company members. Are we doing that now, and are we able to move forward with that?
We are, and I know our city clerk is on, and she can probably speak to this as well, but it was supposed to start earlier than this month, but it's starting this month. So we were just reducing the extra months budgeted prior to January. Is that right, Jessie?
That's correct. Yeah, we're rolling it out this month. We have a form developed and a process developed that will be. So it will be effective. I mean, although we're starting, essentially it's the end of the month, but it will be effective at the beginning of January for all the meetings.
Great, thank you. That's good to hear. That's exciting. And my other question, and if you don't have details on this right now, I'd just love a follow-up email if there's any information on it. I was just asked by a resident for some information about the gym floor repair at the REC Center and what, what exactly the, the issues were. It's my understanding that the gym floor in general is just not in good repair, but they were curious what sort of the specifics of that were.
So speaking with Director Clark about this, you know, there are some hollow spots in the floor. You know, he thinks that, he feels that the, the current, it may not be worth the expenditure prior to the, the redevelopment or replacement of the recreation center. So he's established that it, it's fine for now, certainly not fine long-term over multiple years, but he believes we can, you know, safely postpone this expenditure for now.
So the intention there is to, to not move forward with it soon, but to sort of indefinitely delay it, is that right?
Correct.
And I assume you'll be monitoring just to make sure it's safe and, and there isn't any before then?
Absolutely.
Great, thank you.
Just to piggyback on that and apologize, Councilwoman Circe, for jumping the line, but is that something that Director Clark would be looking at in the ARPA funds that were requested for the REC Center? And I think Councilwoman Circe and I probably had a brain meld there for a minute.
For the ARPA funds, I believe he's prioritizing the roof repair, which is a lot more urgent and, and is potentially unsafe and, and could cause damage, unlike the gym floor repairs. So I know his priority is the roof repair for ARPA funds. And that would only use a small portion of the ARPA funds. You know, a lot of it is being used for the design of the next center.
Great. Councilwoman Circe, did you have other questions?
I do. I just want to make sure that I understand. So in terms of the, the floor, is it that we are holding off until we're doing a full renovation of the REC Center? Or, because I, I want us to all be realistic on timeline. So, you know, is the floor something that, you know, could qualify for ARPA dollars? Is something that we need to consider? Making sure that we are obligating funds to, to do? It would be helpful to hear from HCD around, you know, the timeline for the plan for the REC Center. Because, again, I just want us to be realistic in terms of what timelines we're looking at, and if we're talking about three years, four years from now, then I would err a little bit more on, let's go ahead and if we can use those ARPA dollars to replace the floor, let's replace the floor.
Yeah, so I mean, the, the, the total cost of the floor repair would, is $10,000. So, you know, I think, again, I don't think Director Clark evaluates it will be an issue in the next, you know, one to two years, I would say at this point, and I think it's something that we can absorb into the general fund if needed. But City Manager Fox, did you have a comment?
No, no, you, you, you hit it on, I was going to say, it, it's, it's a possibility too for Director Clark and the team to take a look at the ARPA funding when they start looking at the roof and parse out some of that, the scholarship line item that's there. There could be opportunity, if need be, to do it sooner, but if not, we could push it out and absorb it through the general fund, so.
Yeah, and I, I would say, I, I would not be in favor of redirecting monies from scholarships. I want those scholarships to go towards, you know, providing, you know, programming for kids in the community that need them. But, you know, again, we're talking about $10,000. And, you know, if part of that programming involves kids being able to play basketball, let's, let's make sure we go ahead and fix the floor. Thank you.
Sorry, not seeing any other questions or comments. Thank you, WC Manager Clark, for that update, and this will come back to us for a vote, is it a two-item vote? So next week and February 2nd, and then the following week. Thank you very much. Our next work session, our final one this evening, is continuing the discussion on ARPA funds, and am I staying with you? Our city manager?
I, I would say, I would just, just kick it off this evening, Madam Mayor, members of council. You get to have the deputy city manager walk you through the presentation tonight. And staff, staff will be here, myself, the ARPA manager, Renee Martin is here as well. But the highlight of the presentation will walk you through the new items, as we stated, we would touch on today. And the deputy city manager will go over the pros and cons to a lot of the new items. And then there's a tool that she will share with you this evening, so excited. With that, I'll turn it over to Deputy City Managers.
Great, alright, I'm going to share my screen. Alright, so as City Manager Fox stated, the purpose of tonight's work session is to continue discussion between council and staff on the five-year spending plan for American Rescue Plan Funds, otherwise known as ARPA. I seem to have a sticky key here. There we go. So last week, if you'll recall, we had a work session where our department directors had a chance to fill council members in on more details in terms of the 19 projects that are part of the staff-recommended spending plan that's on the city website. The full report is there to read. So we'll continue some of that discussion this evening. We know that council members had a lot of questions around the meaning of the Social Services Partnerships allocation, so we'll discuss that. We also had a request from multiple council members to provide an update on the status of the library replacement and expansion projects, so we'll provide more detail on the status of that. And then we have three new areas for consideration for inclusion in the spending plan as requested by council, and those are direct cash assistance, stormwater mitigation, and citywide traffic safety study and plan. So those are new projects in terms of they're not in the staff-recommended spending plan, but certainly not new in Tacoma Park. They're projects that our council members have been thinking about for a while now. Alright, let's start with Social Services Partnerships, 1.2 million. That's currently in the staff plan. So what kind of partnerships are envisioned by this 1.2 million dollar set-aside? So this set-aside is really for council's discretion. It can be used for one project or for multiple projects. Staff would emphasize that, you know, given our desire to provide, to connect our vulnerable residents with social services in, in better ways, as well as to do more intensive community outreach. But coupling that with our really limited staff capacity, really, this pot of money is intended to go towards partnerships to be able to provide so, social services as well as to conduct intensive community outreach. So possible uses of this spending bucket might include, just as some examples of how this money might be used. First, it could be used to supplement other projects that were already proposed. So for example, if council feels that workforce development allocation is too low, or if the grant program, such as food insecurity or small business grants, is too low, part of the 1.2 million could be used to augment those other projects. Alternatively, part of the money could be used to distribute to nonprofits in the region through RFPs. We just finished one for food insecurity that had two tracks for SNAP navigation as well as food distribution. But we could have other tracks for other different types of services, and we could do a similar process again. A portion of the funds alternatively could be used for a community connectors program. That's something that here in the city, we've been very interested in. You know, we have a lot of our immigrant communities in particular that have been harder to reach and harder to engage with, and we want to involve them, and that would be a good way to do that. You could also hire a consultant to do focus groups or resident surveys, or even to map different nonprofit providers and their locations in the area, and basically different exercises to better understand what kind of social services are most needed in Tacoma Park. And then finally, another option would be to just take the full amount and put it towards direct cash assistance. So again, this is a flexible pot of money for council's discretion. So speaking of direct cash assistance, let's talk about that. Staff have estimated that that could be structured between 1.2 million to 2.2 million. As part of the staff project prioritization process, we did score two different models of direct cash assistance. There's a lot of options here, a lot of different ways to structure it. So I'll outline just the two that we scored here. The first option is really the simplest option to implement, and it is just a pure cash assistance program for low to moderate-income renters, no strings attached. So for example, we could do a one-time payment of $1,000 to renter households making less than 60% of the area median income, so about $51,000 or under, and that would reach about 2,100 households that are cost-burdened. And we've estimated that total plus administrative costs that might cost 2.3 million dollars. So to be able to do that, again, we don't have the in-house capacity. So we would likely hire an accounting firm, implement marketing and outreach, and then have eligible residents verify eligibility and, and pick up at a city facility. So that's kind of one model. Another option would be to do something that is really a national movement at the time, right now, which is basic income. We could do a one-year pilot. We estimated that that might cost 1.2 million, but again, there's flexibility in how we structure these programs, flexibility in design. I think the difference with basic income is that it includes a research component, some kind of research component, and that can have fixed costs. So here we talk about two different options for a basic income pilot. So if you wanted to really go all-in on the research component, which a lot of local jurisdictions have done, you could do 12, 12 months of payments, perhaps for a group of 250 participants with a control group. Other cities have done it with various levels of benefits that range from 200 to $1,000 a month. And then they've had fixed research costs again, which, which could be anywhere from a million to one and a half million. I think a lot of other local jurisdictions have partnered with foundations, private foundations, to really leverage the public funding. Another way to do it would be to, to just do a simple one-time cash transfer, but do, still do some limited data collection and reporting. And that could have more participants than option A. And maybe target a group like single moms in the city of low to moderate income. We know that single moms in the city have a 14.3% poverty rate. But again, there's different ways to structure this, and our Public Administration Specialist, Dan Powers, is with us this evening. He did his graduate studies actually on basic income and cash assistance, so we can certainly talk through implementation later. So let's talk about the pros and cons of these approaches. So of course, the pros of the, the base, the simple cash assistance or cash transfer is that we know that renters in Tacoma Park are more vulnerable. There is a lot of great research out there on the benefits of direct cash assistance. Potentially, the cons are that, you know, we want to make sure it gets in, gets into the right hands, to the right household, so a lot of, you know, thinking through that upfront. It is only a one-time payment, you know, given the limited funding we have available, it's hard to do, to reach a lot of residents and do anything more than a one-time payment, so you know, it's not ideal to, to set a precedent of doing that if the city can't offer these types of programs in the future. And that's where the uncertainty around whether the city can provide this long-term comes in. And then, you know, it's, it, again, we, I think just controlling who accesses it is the point there in terms of it could be potentially less precise. And then with basic income, again, there's different ways to do it. The pros of the more research-oriented approach are that you can benefit other jurisdictions that are looking to do these types of projects, so you know, the research that we would provide would kind of help basic income programs gain momentum nationally, potentially if we wanted to go have the research aspect. But again, this could be challenging to implement, and this, this structure would be a lot more hands-on, and again, staff capacity is, is very limited, so we would have to factor in, you know, part-time help to be able to implement these kinds of programs. And with option B, you know, the pros and cons are similar. Another option for the 1.2 million for Social Services Partnerships is community connectors, as I mentioned earlier. This could range from about half a million to 1.7 million. There's different ways to structure it. We scored a proposal for 1.7 million, which would be about $340,000 per year with three full-time connectors and a full-time supervisor. We, again, our Public Administration Specialist, Dan Powers, actually partnered with Cornell University in recent weeks to do some best practices research on this. The student actually interviewed Boulder, Colorado, and a couple other cities. The cities either did a per diem, a stipend, or flexible funds for the connectors, and they all had a full-time manager. And again, the aim of these types of programs are to build trust, to create two-way dialogue, and share information. A key to the success of these kinds of programs is trust-building. It should be a real partnership with clear goals. And the connectors themselves can be generalist, or they can be targeted to specific needs. The pros and cons of this kind of project, the pros would be that we would certainly improve community engagement. We talk a lot in the city about moving off of digital platforms to in-person for those residents who don't always engage through digital platforms. So we hope to reach the hard-to-reach. We could distribute information about our other programs, including ARPA projects, and get community input beyond our existing methods. The cons are, as always, ARPA is a limited timeframe, and we would need to, you know, obviously want to establish trust and allow the connectors to build relationships. And there would be, you know, a lot of setup and design. And then the student told us that some of the other cities were not successful, depending on how they did setups. We would want to be careful if we decided to go this route. Another area of consideration for ARPA spending is a citywide traffic study and plan. We don't have an estimate for this yet. This was proposed by Mayor Stewart, as well as Councilwoman Kostic. And council estimated, or proposed, $200,000 for a study in the first year with with remaining amount to be determined, and we don't have a staff estimate yet. But this would be a citywide traffic safety assessment and plan around traffic issues in the area. We would look at, you know, high-traffic safety challenges, create a plan to make improvements, and implement that over time with a vision of zero deaths. And we would tap into the Vision Zero Network nationally, which involves 51 cities. The pros and cons of this kind of project, the pros are, of course, there's a need in the city. We would be able to make pedestrian-friendly improvements, reduce accidents, promote, you know, avoid unsafe roads, and have more creative, possibly comprehensive ideas as opposed to, you know, more isolated approaches. We also, again, public administration specialist Powers was able to partner with Cornell University in recent weeks to do some best practices surveying of other cities that have done these types of studies. And that's where some of the possible cons come from. So staff capacity is a immense challenge for this kind of project. This would also be a very high-cost project if we were really going to try to go citywide. And for that reason, a lot of the cities that have done these types of studies are a lot larger than Tacoma Park. So seven out of the, the Vision Zero cities have less than 100,000 people. And there's also a question of impact. Some of the cities surveyed met with challenges in implementation or, or weren't able to demonstrate clear effectiveness. So that, that again emerged out of a recent best practices survey. All right, and for this next project or area of consideration, I'll turn it over to Director Braithwaite. This is stormwater infrastructure and private property flood mitigation.
Thank you. Following Jessica's lead on sort of the comments that we have tonight, we have done a bit of research and speaking to other jurisdictions about examples of stormwater work done on private property. Our initial research is that there tends to be sort of two types of programs. There's the model that's similar to the County Rainscapes Program, or in some jurisdictions, very specific flood mitigation-type grants, where the property owners identify issues. And then there's an application process where the city assists with providing funding once the project is complete. In almost all those cases, the development of the project, identification of the project is done by the property owner. They line up the contractor, they select the work that's being done, and the city partners with the portion of the funding. There are a few, very few examples of engineering support provided by the jurisdiction in these types of situations where consulting engineer is available to do some site work. I think in looking at some of these programs, part of the challenge is, of course, anytime you work on private property, there's issues with access and liability and a whole myriad of other situations that can come up. More recently, we've been talking with the Low Impact Design Center, which has done several stormwater resiliency analysis for Chevrolet Somerset in Hyattsville. And we've gotten copies of those studies. Also, and I'm, I'm sure all of you have recently gotten the Stormwater Group's resiliency plan that we got yesterday from the Tacoma Climate Action folks. Really appreciated that document. It is dense with a lot of ideas and suggestions. Based on what we've been able to glean from it so far, it seems that some of the work that the Low Impact Design Center has done provides a similar structure in that they select a geographic area, do an analysis of existing topography, infrastructure, and then identify both green and gray solutions for stormwater. By green, I mean those types of things, bioretentions, trees, rain gardens, green roofs. Gray solutions are more the inlets, pipes, structures that are, are needed for stormwater conveyance. So there's, there are some examples that we've looked into. In, in most cases, this is pretty new. By and large, jurisdictions don't tend to do work on private property. And the, the scope of the work has been much smaller than, you know, small neighborhoods or small portions of, of an area. In terms of the pros and cons of either of those models, obviously a pro is that it addresses stormwater challenges on private property and assists homeowners. It contributes to the city's climate action plan. And there's also, as you all know, a high level of community organization around action on this issue. So there's a high level of interest and a sense of urgency on the part of many members of our community. Some of the cons is that there's a, any of this would require a significant staffing, even if we were working with consultants. So we have a serious lack of staff capacity to initiate or implement either model. We also have many planned public infrastructure projects that still need to be completed. And I just wanted to, to note that in this fiscal year, we have had six stormwater projects in the works. Five of the six are all in right-of-way specifically. One is within the private property, but it is on a city, city structure within private property. And all of them are addressing stormwater resiliency, both for now and in the future, using a mixture of green as well as, as gray technologies. So the city has a very robust process as identified annually through our stormwater budget and capital budget plan to move these projects forward. Another concern with work on private property is the potential legal risk if the city is developing designs for private property. Both should the planned intervention or methods not, not work or not be satisfactory for the private property owners for which they were built on, but also unintended consequences for other properties in, in and around that area when you're dealing with infiltration and stormwater management. There can potentially be aspects that you add additional infiltration into groundwater that then shows up in somebody else's yard or property. Also, as you can imagine, this is a long-term initiative. ARPA funding is time-limited funding. So if the city were to embark on this type of program, it will need other sources of funding to continue. This will be a multi-year, as, as we have been with all our stormwater projects. We have multi-year plans and will no doubt require an increase in our stormwater fee. And some of the costs associated with this type of initiative would be cost of technical expertise in-house, the cost of an engineer and a full-time administrator for that type of program in-house. We're, we're estimating, and again, just for two or three projects per year, a program cost of over $4 million for the extension of the five years of the ARPA funds.
Thank you, Director Braithwaite. And finally, we have the library expansion for 2 million, and we have Director Jones with us this evening to discuss the status of this project and provide more details.
Yes, good evening. I wanted to address some questions that we've gotten about substance and timing with regards to this proposal. We believe that this building does fulfill ARPA criteria for many reasons, but especially in these areas that are on the slide. Bridging the digital divide and economic recovery are both items that are very closely linked at the individual level. And libraries, including ours, help bridge the digital divide. It's pretty impossible to secure a job, especially in a pandemic age, without having computer access that we provide. And having access to the library's other resources like online and physical materials dedicated to lifelong learning, Wi-Fi, a number of things, can also help improve application materials and candidacy. We do provide an excellent staff who are experts in helping people navigate forums and other workforce development activities, especially when it comes to teaching people how to do things themselves and gain some self-sufficiency on technology. We do the best we can with what we currently have, and I do commend the library and computer center staff on the work that they do. But better facilities would support more programming and resources that align with these ARPA goals. And another thing with regards to economic recovery, funds spent on public libraries are good investments. The Texas State Library released a study in 2017 showing that for every dollar spent on public libraries in Texas, communities see a return of $4.64 in access to resources, programming, activities, services, and technology. So libraries contribute to economic growth and recovery, and they do so in ways that have meaningful, tangible impact for individuals. Safety is also a concern. We need a space that can support operations in a safe, new normal. We need places for people to spread out, like a dedicated program room, a larger reading room, and individual isolated spaces where people can do things like remote job interviews or online community engagement. And I wasn't here pre-pandemic, but I have seen attendance numbers for programs that normally occurred in the children's room. And I cannot currently envision a time in which anybody would feel comfortable hosting more than 75 people in there. It wasn't big enough to serve our community before the pandemic, but the need is especially urgent now. And next slide, please. So timing is important with this request. The design and permitting is pretty much complete and that no major changes can be made to the design without having to resubmit applications for permits. Our construction manager, Arcadis, is currently conducting the constructability review and value engineering study and drafting RFQ documents. Our current cost estimates are based on numbers from this past summer. And it appears that what's really driving the cost escalation is inflation and increased costs for materials and labor, which is really something that we don't expect to improve with more time. Because of this, we've been trying to move forward with the process as much as we are able, and the funding piece right now is the roadblock in sight. So without approval of the additional funds, we jeopardize the bidding process and risk additional delays, which will almost certainly result in additional costs. Delaying this process to attempt to revise the design significantly enough to compensate for cost increases since 2017, I think is a high-risk, low-reward prospect. The scale of this design is a result of conversations about community needs going back to 2017, and the library that we have now is not large or modern enough to meet those needs. The current design reflects how libraries are used now, and that's not just from data about nationwide trends. It's also rooted in what we hear at the circulation desk day in and day out from our patrons. So I hope I've been able to answer some of the questions about why this and why now. And I think this new building is going to be a really wonderful community asset that's worth the investment of time and money that we're putting in.
Great, thank you, Director Jones. And to close, just wanted to remind council and residents watching at home of the theme and goals of the original staff recommended spending plan that, of course, align with council priorities. We want to come up with a spending plan that works towards a recovered, resilient Tacoma Park and one that is balanced. And so we, you know, tried to prioritize vulnerable residents' assistance by making sure that 50% of the total amount is going towards vulnerable residents. We, we did balance that with, you know, investments, city facilities, and public infrastructure as we believe those longer-term investments are incredibly important and make a lot of sense with ARPA. And then, of course, to administer expanded programming, we need, of course, some investment in city operations, workforce, and fiscal stability. So currently, this was the staff recommended plan kind of breakdown. The red on the left were the projects that fall under assisting vulnerable residents. The purple is capital and infrastructure investments, and the orange are city operations. So I'm trying to strike a balance here. Next week, city council will be working to decide what the final balance will be, and we'll be using a reconciliation sheet that actually includes this visualization. And at this point, before we open it up for discussion, I'm going to stop, stop sharing my screen. And Mr. Powers, if you could queue up the reconciliation sheet just to show it to council quickly, we can show them how it works. And that'll primarily be used for next week's work session so that we can start to plug in numbers for the final spending plan.
So the chart here is based on the things that are entered in this table. And I think the idea for being able to use this as a tool would be, if you wanted to change the costs of different proposals or add new proposals, you could change it here and the chart would automatically update as well as information on what you, has been allocated in the council totals column here among the projects that are funded. So if I, just removing this project, for example, putting in zero, or let's say $500, it, $50,000, it shrinks from a larger chunk to a smaller chunk. Up here, it says that you now have $950,000 remaining. And I can add another project here, this thing, example. To, we had a zero original total. Put $1 million here and then sort, add the goal, and it reorders the chart to show the project that's been added. So, and then this also updates up here with the totals that are calculated here. So I guess that's just a quick demo of what the tool would look like. But I think the idea is to let you edit or play with existing costs and add new projects.
Great, thank you, Mr. Powers. And we'll be circulating that to council so you can familiarize yourselves with it before next week. But it's very similar, a little bit snazzier, but very similar to the budget reconciliation spreadsheets that we use for our reconciliations for the regular budget process each year. So we look forward, we can even start tonight if you would like, but that'll be used for next week's work session. Great, thank you so much for that. And let's see, I think Councilmember Smith has his hand up.
Ms. Clark, thank you for the presentation. Thank you, Mr. Powers, for building that reconciliation matrix for us. Looks really good. Let me start with the library, $2 million. I thought council was told that we were going to use money from the restricted funds in our broadband cable accounts around the same amount of, dollar amount that was going to pay for some of these things. Has that just, is that no longer on the table? And one, two, why can't we access the grants that President Biden has provided in the BIF bill? There's $45 billion that is supposed to be for things like this, for infrastructure and for lower-income people to have consistent wide-ranging broadband access. Why, why aren't we able to access that rather than using the, the very important ARPA funds for this project?
Sure, so for the cable grants, we do have a couple hundred thousand dollars remaining. Some of that does have to be preserved for city TV. And wouldn't be sufficient, obviously, to cover the $2 million increase. To the second part of your question, there really hasn't been a lot of guidance sent out to us directly about the infrastructure bill yet to municipalities. I, I think City Manager Fox might know more about why that is, why we haven't gotten much, much. You know, when ARPA first came out, it seemed like we were bombarded with webinars and resources, and the infrastructure bill just hasn't gotten there yet. We, we were, we are looking at, there are various grant programs available, and we're looking through those. We were really looking at it primarily for stormwater, but we can look again to, to see if library would be eligible. My impression is that it would not. But of course, we didn't know much about the infrastructure bill at the time that we were, you know, working on ARPA.
Okay, I'll, I'll send an email that I get from the administration about the broadband grants. I'll send that to you and, and Mr. Fox. Now, let, let me talk about what I, I, I do want to see money go to. I, I think it's really important that what Priscilla brought up. that what Priscilla brought up regarding nonprofits getting access to to ARPA and just basically using the system that's already been built out at the county level. I think that is something that should be considered. I think that Troy Jacobs' point about increasing money for businesses is critical. I would like to see a substantial increase in that. And then finally, direct cash payments. I like that number, $2 million. That's, that seems like a good, good amount. I don't think we should pursue UBI. You know, we don't have research per, or we shouldn't go down that track. The county is already doing something like, like that. I mean, you know, some of our residents might be part of that research project, so I don't think we should duplicate that plan. But I do like the idea of hiring a Deloitte or a McKinsey to help distribute direct cash payments to our residents, have a narrow eligibility. And if we want to correct, collect some data, quantitative and qualitative data to, to help us get a better snapshot of our residents, I, I would support that. I think Mr. Powers could use that information to inform the council. But that's, that's what I'd like to see. Thank you.
Anyone else? Councilmember Siemens, if you're talking, you're on mute. I see your mouth moving.
I did. Hopefully, I was not drooling. I'm good, thank you.
All right, thank you. I, Councilman DiBala?
Yeah, I have a number of things, but for now, I'd like to just focus on the library. So I did go back and look at my notes, and my notes also say that there was upwards of $2.2 million allocated from the cable grant funds to the library to cover various. So that the total that we were looking at was $7 million plus $2. something million plus the couple hundred thousand bucks in in state grants, which is, which made it possible. So I would appreciate seeing those numbers redone and how they've changed so that I can understand why we need at this point before we've heard back from the construction manager about their rough cost estimate. Why we, why we feel that we need the $2 million from ARPA funds at this point. I, I completely agree. I should say first, I want the library. I want it now. I want it yesterday. I completely agree that it, it meets the ARPA criteria because it serves the very people in the long run that are identified as, as, as eligible for assistance under ARPA. So I understand all of that. I am quite confused about the numbers and the need at this point for setting aside this amount of money when we have so many other both short and long-term needs for assistance for residents. So I'll stop there. Thank you.
Sorry, Councilwoman Circe.
Okay. Thank you all so much for putting in so much thought behind the ideas that were proposed. So in terms of the one-time payment versus the guaranteed income approach, I'm still a bit torn in terms of what method might make, you know, not just from the perspective of getting cash in the hands, but longer-term impacts of the individuals that receive those dollars. So you know, for some of my residents, $1,000 wouldn't even cover their rent. So you know, how do we make sure that for those residents that are most in need, that we're, we're, we are going to have like that lasting impact that can really try to help to transition people in a meaningful way out of poverty? So I kind of lean more towards the guaranteed approach because it provides that, it's a smaller number of people, but provides that financial assistance more so over time. So for Mr. Powers, if you had any across your work, if you identified like some papers or some things that really look good, that might be useful, I would definitely be open to taking a look at some of those examples or pilots or results from some of the other places that might have done this to kind of help me with kind of weighing the options of both approaches. Again, the one-time payment is, is quick and fast and perhaps maybe a little administratively easier. But the guaranteed may actually have, or we may see more longstanding impacts of those individuals that might be able to participate. So if, if you did have any papers or you came across anything, I would love to see those. The other area that I would be interested in learning a little bit more about is the traffic study. You know, I know that this is something that we've been asking for, for quite some time, and we've been told for many years, it is very expensive. So that's not new. But one of the things that I guess I'm not fully understanding is the fact that our small size makes it more difficult. I, I mean, I understand that we're surrounded by, we have ownership issues in terms of roads. I get that. But I would, I would think that aspects of, you know, the fact of the size of the city might make things a little less challenging, perhaps not more. So can someone kind of expand upon that a little bit so that we can get a better understanding of of that limitation of doing a citywide traffic study?
Mr. Power, yeah. Director Braithwaite or Mr. Pat, so Mr. Powers assisted with the best practices research, but Director Braithwaite has been involved longer as well. Did you want to comment first, Director Braithwaite?
I, I just wanted to kind of respond in a bit to why the smaller, smaller city makes it more difficult. Partially because it, it really has a limitation on the options. The streets where we have significant traffic are those state highways. So where, where this is being done in other jurisdictions, where you first look for pedestrian safety and vision zero goals is areas where you have, you know, congestion, high volumes of traffic, higher speeds. And so right off the top for us, we eliminate all the state highways. There's no New Hampshire Avenue, no 410, no Carroll Avenue, no Philadelphia. We, we, that's not in our toolbox. That's not in our playbook. So that leaves us with relatively narrow residential streets. So our, it really shrinks down the types of roadways that we're looking at. They're all very low volume comparatively, residential streets. And so, you know, the kind of options and possibilities you have available there are significantly reduced. And you just have, you know, a lot of roadway miles, 34 roadway miles to evaluate with traffic counts and data gathering. So you're really, it really is focusing a lot of resources on areas where you have very, you know, relatively low volumes of traffic compared to what other larger cities are looking at.
And has there been, I'm sorry, has there been any thought about or has there been conversations with working with like S H A or, you know, like basically trying to include some of those state highways as part of a more citywide approach?
I don't think we've posed the question to them directly. We've certainly had experience working with them on case-by-case basis. State Highway Administration is very wedded to engineering standards and the manual of uniform traffic control devices. And you can't really get them to think very far outside the box. You know, that said, we'll continue to try to, and we had a meeting just, was it yesterday with them, where we tried to push some very well, well, good ideas that are, exist in other places, but just aren't, you know, in the manual things to, you know, to provide additional visual warnings prior to crosswalks with pavement markings. And they're just, their toolbox is very limited. So, you know, I think, you know, and again, it might be unfair to say, but I think where state highway is going to be interested, it is in those areas where they have a high volume of traffic, high need, multi-user, you know, pedestrian, bicycle, bus routes, you know, where they can really orchestrate around a transit center type arrangement. So they're going to go for, you know, bigger models as well, if they're going to explore options for alternatives. So.
Okay, that's helpful. Thank you for clarifying. And that's all I have. Thank you so much.
Councilman Kostic?
Yeah, thank you for all the information. I have a couple of things, but I did just want to note a couple of thoughts on the traffic study since we were just talking about it. I, I did talk with Transportation Planning Board staff a little bit and kind of brainstorm about an idea related to this. They did say they would have the staff capacity to help assist city staff with RFP creation. So that could be something, I think I noticed on the slide that that was something that would be potentially a staff burden to, to work on. It seems like there is some assistance there that could help. In terms of the kind of collaborative approach, the other thing I sort of posed to them was I, I wondered whether there might be some opportunity to work with other jurisdictions that are perhaps neighboring us. I think that comes with some, some challenges because those are much larger jurisdictions, if you're talking about the counties and DC. But they certainly expressed a desire and a willingness to, at the very least, help convene us in a meeting with some other entities if we wanted to sort of explore that or just do our own work and, and share it and collaborate with them. So just some thoughts on those things. There are also some grants available through the Transportation Planning Board to work on pedestrian safety issues. So that's something we could potentially look at as well. So just wanted to toss those things out. I have a couple of questions. The first, with regard to the grants, we've, I've heard from a number of residents and we heard some tonight during the public comments about an interest in being able to support local nonprofits with grants. And so I, I'm trying to understand and wrap my head a little bit around what's already proposed versus what might be needed on that. So am I understanding correctly that there is already some built-in potential for that within what's being proposed? And is that a part of the, the 1.2 million that we were discussing earlier or or is that really not sort of, is there not capacity within that to allow for it?
Yeah, yes. And the 1.2 million in the social services that's already proposed is, is where we looked at for nonprofit support. And that's the bucket of funding that we proposed to put on the table for council where you can slice and dice any, any which way you want, whether if you want that half-two nonprofit CBOs in the community and do the other half the community connector, or if you want to do the guaranteed income or direct financial assistance. So that's that 1.2 million.
Okay, that's helpful to understand sort of where that bucket would live. I just a couple of other thoughts and questions on things. So on the basic cash, there, the, the basic income, guaranteed income versus the cash, direct cash assistance. I'm trying to wrap my head a little bit around the exact differences. And would you mind, Ms. Clark, actually pulling back up those slides for a minute? I, I just wanted to take a look at that and try to understand. It looked like in one of the cases with the guaranteed income, you were proposing about $200 a month versus the 1,000 and one time, which seems, you know, not, not exactly the same, but not vastly different. I, I guess I'm just trying to figure out in terms of some of the costs and the differences, the, the basic income would be a monthly, a monthly pilot, am I understanding correctly, versus sort of the one-time transfer and can you just talk a little bit, I guess, a little more about what the differences are between those?
Sure. So if it's, if it's monthly, it would be a smaller group of people. Most of the one-time payments we're looking at were around $1,000. So for option B, that would reach more participants because you're not doing monthly, you're just doing a one-time, $1,000 payment. And Mr. Powers, I don't know if you wanted to, to speak a little bit to what that total would be. Did you have the count of single moms, for example?
I think there are about 616 or so like single mom households total in the city. So the total that would be targeted by this program would be like a lower amount below, you know, some income threshold. But yeah, I think the first option would be more similar to like a lot of the pilots that other cities have done where there's like a half the 250 people are like a control group who are getting either no benefits or a lower level of benefits and half are like the research group getting a higher level of benefits. And then you study the like survey, the participants in each group to understand their sort of outcomes over time and are able to report data on that. Whereas the second option I think is similar to, like option B is sort of similar to option one in some ways, but just not necessarily targeted renters, but a one-time payment to some group that of vulnerable residents that the city is targeting. It could be $1,000 to $2,000, but that was just, those are just sort of preliminary like examples of what that type of
So is, is option, I guess I'm looking at the difference between option B versus the cash assistance where you are doing a one-time transfer with both. Option B would be fewer people and you would be doing the research. Is that the difference? Or is there additional? Are there additional differences in terms of the structuring or the thought process there?
I think just potentially different eligibility groups. Option one was a proposal we received from a resident to specifically or target the payment at renter households in the city. Whereas like a basic income program could be, yeah, I think a little more data collection could be involved, but also could be targeted at sort of other vulnerable groups. That renters as an example.
If I could just jump in, sorry.
Go ahead.
Because the Mayors for Guaranteed Income, I just sent this around to everyone, has pulled together some stuff for the city that and they actually did a presentation for the Social Justice Group at the Presbyterian Church, and I've sent the information to staff. Many times also guaranteed income programs also have other components to them. We were approached in the fall by professors at George Washington University, who is partnering with the Breeze With Me nonprofit to do pilots on guaranteed income. And so sometimes the, another difference could be that you're offering, also offering other services to connect people either to, depending on the group that you selected to classes on different things, or if it's like workforce development. So there's a bit more wraparound that you're helping people connect to the services they need. So, and yeah, I think that's also just one of the differences that could be built into a guaranteed income pilot.
And so it's the 2,100 renter households in the first option? Is that all the renter households in that income bracket? Or is there some portion of them?
That's all in the less than 60% AMI or income bracket.
Thanks. I think I'm gonna, it's gonna take me a little time to just sort of start through and think through these. So I'll probably have a couple of additional questions in the future, but that's really helpful.
And I'll send folks the, the link to the GW letter that we received in the fall.
That sounds good. I did have a couple of other things. One with regard to the stormwater and the, the private stormwater. So one of the needs that I have seen in the community is So one of the needs that I have seen in the community is sort of the, the convener role being needed. You, you have large spas of people who have stormwater problems and who's. Whatever they do on their property impacts other people and there's sort of a need for some type of convener. Um, so they could do something on their own, but they're just not necessarily coming together with neighbors or they're not thinking to come together with neighbors. And there seems to be some potential to have multiple people come together and do a project that would really benefit each other and potentially the city. So I guess I, I'm curious, uh, and maybe that's part of what you were looking at, Ms. Braithwaite, but I'm trying to understand if that. Kind of convener role was something you looked at with regard to some of the stormwater work? Or if that's something else we could look at um, partnering with an outside organization? Maybe to, to create some kind of structure like that, that might be more of a long-term approach? That might help solve some of those problems as sort of a convening body rather than having it be on the city in the future.
Yeah, I, I think you raise a very good point. Uh, we've certainly heard uh, that concern and interest as well. There's plenty of stuff online these days and through the county resources of Rainscapes, you can find tons of information about. Stormwater management options that can be considered, uh, but it can feel a little overwhelming. And of course, um, the devil's always in the details in terms of what can actually happen on your particular site or property. Um, in order to make progress in that regard and really have a more um. Uh, you know, robust plan of actually providing either direct consultation or more detailed information to an individual or groups of individuals. Uh, that would require a level of staffing um, uh, both. It, you know, for the city as well as even potentially with consulting groups. So we could potentially have engineers on call or landscape architects or, or uh, you know. Partner with a organization that has a wide variety of those skillsets. So they could, you know, make people available on a, on a as-meet basis, but we'd have to oversee the management and. Um, handling of that, scheduling of that, it's a, it would create a whole uh, system within itself. Where we'd have to figure out how to um, make that service available, how to monitor the use of that service. And how to determine where, where and who gets those limited um, hours and times. So it raises a whole series of other questions um, which, which primarily has, you know, always comes down to um. To, to dollars and, and expertise and uh, and time available to do it. Uh, so that's a, a real challenge when you get on to private property. Um, one of the, the interesting things about the way the county's done their Rainscapes program is of course they certify contractors to. You know, to do the work, they take their training, uh, so at least people have a modicum of sense that um, if I use one of these list of contractors. They've at least gone through uh, the county training and you know, there's a, a increased competence that they, you know, will provide a good assessment. Um, so it really is kind of a treacherous um, treacherous area to kind of lean into private property or private contractor versus public's, public dollars um, kind of discussion. And to um, facilitate um, that type of site development, individual property owner. Um, issue analysis and decisions is uh, is really challenging when you have the private sector available to offer that. Uh, but making that connection between what options might work and what contractors might provide it. I haven't seen any great examples of where that's, that's being done. Uh, usually programs develop options and ideas and here's the, here's the list of three things you should do. Here's a list of contractors you can use and then the property owner is left with, you know, making that, making that connection. Um, I think it's particularly challenging when you're trying to do a broader group. Uh, and I think your point is, is well taken. Um, these things don't usually occur in isolation. Though sometimes there may be individual properties that are impacted, but it's usually a whole series of backyards or a whole series of. You know, everybody on one side of the street uh, that's impacted. Um, and so um. The few times that we've tried to convene sort of groups um, to discuss these types of things, it becomes incredibly challenging. Uh, to get very far along the process. So it would, it would take quite a bit of time and expertise in navigating and, you know, creating a process where neighborhood. Neighbors could come together to discuss that time, type of thing, even in areas where there's a high motivation. Um, we, we've had trouble uh, getting, getting to the end of uh, of an agreement on a design for some of these things.
That's helpful. Thank you. I'd love to dig in, in the future a little more on that. Just I, I totally understand the barriers to why it's hard for the city to do it. And yet it seems like there's this gap that there isn't anyone else doing it and it isn't an individual property thing because it really is the block. Um, so it's, there's just this gap where you don't have really an entity that can kind of bring people together there. Um, that's helpful though. Thank you. And I, like you said, I, I appreciated the um, the information that's come from the, the community stormwater group that's working on that. I'm going to dig a little deeper into that as well. I know there's a couple of, of my colleagues who have hands up, so I, I just have two, two other things I will um, mention briefly. Um, one is with regard to the mental health. Um, uh, counselors. I am also interested in understanding uh, if there is um, a structure that could um. Separate those, those counselors from, from being housed within the police department. And I'd be interested in kind of hearing a little more about that um, in the future and what that might, what that might be possible, what we might be able to do um, eh, to make that possible. Um, the other thing is that just still trying to figure out on the library. Um, and, and I'll dig back into my notes a little bit more. Um. Is there an increase in the total estimate um. Above what we got in our last update in terms of, of the ex- expected um, total cost increase? Or is that really relatively similar to what was before?
So it's, it is a cost increase and I'm glad you looped back, Councilwoman Casia, because we actually need to loop back to Councilwoman Dibala's question on the cable grants. So um, we already have factored in two and a half million of the cable grants already. In providing the $2 million dollar increase estimate for ARPA. Um, the remaining cable grants I was referencing earlier are about 600,000 and City TV has indicated. That they need that amount for um, future infant, the for five-year capital investments for City TV. So we have maxed out the cable grants already, those are included. Um, and again, as Director Jones pointed out, the increase is from a doubling in labor and materials. So when we got our last cost estimate, we saw doubling of the unit rate cost of steel, lumber, et cetera. So it, it's the market impact.
Could we just have some of that information in a spreadsheet form? I think it would just be helpful for me to see it in a visual way before our next meeting. Thank you.
Great. Um, Councilmember Siemens.
Thank you. Uh, it's always exciting when someone comes in and puts down a couple of bags of money on the table and says, gee, how do you want to use this? Uh, the um, the main goal here is uh, from my perspective is to help to make sure people uh, are made whole as we go through uh, this pandemic from the damage that's been done already. And also looking forward into what may still happen. Um, I wanted to talk just briefly about the stormwater. Um, you know, and, and Ms. Braithwaite, you know, here in uh, in Ward Four. We have a serious stormwater problem uh, that involves the city at two ends of the problem and, and uh. And then at least four uh, residents uh, or four properties. Uh, between Geneva Avenue and Hilltop uh, Avenue. And it does, um, it creates a. A major problem there on Hilltop and then goes on washes down into Sligo Creek, uh, which is also an environmental disaster. Um. So I, I, I'm hopeful that, that we can, whether it's with this money or with uh, some other money that, that we can divine a way of, of. Uh, making this all happen, get these uh, these uh, water problems, stormwater problems that either. Uh, start on private property or cut through private property. Uh, some way to actually deal with them. I know that, you know, many of the residents that talk with me say, well gee, if I lived in Montgomery County outside of Tacoma Park. The county government would help me, but because I live in Tacoma Park. Um, they aren't qualified to, to get help from the county. Uh, I don't know enough about that to argue with them uh, or to uh, say gee, that, you know, that's an approach maybe we should use too. Um, but it would be interesting to hear um, if there are alternative approaches that we haven't considered yet. And, and not tonight, I'm not asking for a long discussion tonight, but um, aside from that, you know, there are several. Uh, pieces of this, like the direct support uh, for residents that, that sound like I, I, I can really understand how. The, the money's being used to assist people with their uh, housing payments, with the lack of, of food. The, the impact of their loss of employment, all caused by the, the pandemic. Um, but I, I just want to, I'm just encourage my colleagues to focus on that when we're thinking about how we use this money. Uh, because I think that uh, takes a priority over some of the things that we look at and say. Well, gee, this is something we've wanted to do for a long time and now here's some money on the table and maybe we can address it. And um, and I, I'll tell you, one of the ones that I have trouble with is the uh, traffic survey. I think that, that money could be better used uh, for the residents. Um, by putting that into some of the direct particip- uh, direct funding that we've talked about. So, and I'm uh, remain open minded, I keep listening to my colleagues, uh, but I want my colleagues to also think about these peeps too. Thank you.
Councilmember Kovar.
Thank you and, and thank you for the information and specifically to Ms. Clark and Mr. Powers in, in particular. And I, I do want to say i- it's encouraging that the staff obviously heard. The council and the community and has come forward, come back to us with um, come forward back to us with um, some additional. Concepts for us to think about, which are in line with a lot of what we've heard from the community, what council members have been talking about, even really what we heard. Tonight in the, from, from the public in the public hearing. So I appreciate those suggestions or those possibilities, at least that they have brought forward. And I just wanted to react to a few of the specific programs that we've talked about here tonight and then make one or two more general observations. So first of all, on the question of the uh, community partnerships. Um, I do think it would make sense for that to be uh, in the form of grants. For local or area NGOs that can help Tacoma Park. And a number of the things that we've heard from members of the community, including tonight. Uh, in some cases, when it comes to, for example, supporting lunch and learner or supporting uh, housing for the developmentally disabled. Those are the kinds of things that don't fit into some of the other bigger ideas that the staff have put forward, but which could be funded out of that. And to the extent as uh, Ms. Lavavitz mentioned that there, that there may be even a template that we could use for that. I think it's a great idea and I, I would like to see that pool of funds be used in that way. Now I, I do think the amount is probably higher than we need, we can talk about that separately. But so my, my first thought is that I would like to see that program function as a grant program for local NGOs. Now, when it comes to the direct date, I, I appreciate the suggestions. I'm a little skeptical of the, of the research piece just because I don't think we really have the capacity to do that. And I'm not sure I feel that great about giving some people one amount and some people another amount to kind of run a test. I mean, I think there are institutions that could do that and I'm not sure that's what we as a municipality should be doing. So I would favor if we're going to go that route and I think we should really look at it very closely, doing so. Um, more like option one, if that's the right term for it, which is the direct date. Now, the exact um, question about who would qualify and how do we calculate and what the total amount would be is a separate matter. We can talk about that, but I did, I have a couple of questions. Uh, in terms of selecting 60% AMI, is that just, was there specifically? I'm not against that number, but I'm just wondering why that as opposed to some other number.
Uh, I think um, part of the initial, but I guess one reason is uh, just that most um. Renters below that income level experience housing cost burden. Uh, and there's a bit of a, like in the next income bucket, it's not the majority that are experiencing that. So I guess that's the sort of main reason and part of it was also just eligibility stuff, but I think the.
And so i- if we did a version of that. What form is the money that people are receiving going to be in? I mean, I know we're not handing them a, a bag of cash, but is it sent to them electronically? Do they pick up a check? Do we give them a, a bank card? What's the, or have we not gotten that part yet?
Yeah, I mean, it, it depends on how it's structured. I, I know um. That it could be by check, that, that there has to be some way to verify who's receiving it and their eligibility. So we, we would need some interaction with the recipient.
Yeah, one, one of the things that I worry about is um, and this gets back to this financial, financial literacy that I think I talked about before. If it isn't in form of checks, I think the worst thing would be if we give a group of deserving people checks. And then they end up having to go to check cashing places. We really need to avoid that at, at all costs. And then the second thing is, I don't know if there's other security concerns about someone's partner being able to, you know, if it's, if it's a. Bank card, being able to take advantage of it. So there's a few issues around that that I'd like to see us work out. I don't know what the correct amount would be or what the curve should be, but I think option number one would be better. I'm on the library, the, the main thing I'd like to understand better there, I had, I did have a discussion with the city manager about this this afternoon, but. I'm not sure I'm, I'm fully all the way there in terms of understanding it. I really was under the impression that the um. Uh, the construction management firm was going to give us an updated set of numbers in terms of an estimate. Maybe not down to the last uh, iota of every, of every um, component of the project, but an update that we could look at. And I think it'd be preferable to see that before, before we do this. So I don't know what the expectation is about them being able to do that.
Sure. So I, I don't know if um, Director Jones has been more directly involved with the construction manager, but. Um, they do do some limited value engineering in terms of they. That if there are minor tweaks that can be made to the design to save money, I think they'll raise those. But the constructability review is as their city manager Fox stated primarily about just making sure that. The design will work as constructed, so it's, it's more about the nuts and bolts and not so much about um, identifying cost savings. Because any major cost savings would come, would require a major redesign and.
Yeah, to, to be clear.
We're, we're almost to bid, so the mandatory referral and, and the permitting is complete. And you know, we're seeking easements, et cetera. Um, so.
I'm not, that's not what I'm asking though. I'm not asking for them to find us cost savings now. I'm asking for them to say that estimate we got six months ago looks pretty good or maybe is off in this way. That's, that's what I think would be helpful for us to have before we vote on this.
Yeah, and, and most of those cost estimates will come once the RFP hits the street and we, um, and we get respondents to the RFP. We'll have a better idea of what that would be.
Yeah, okay. Um, uh, just a few other things here on stormwater. I haven't had a chance to read the material submitted by the group. Appreciate receiving it. It's kind of long and I, I think I only got it either yesterday or today. So I, I will plan to go through that. Um, to me, if we did a version of that, just to be clear to folks, in my conception of it, isn't like. If Peter Kovar's got a problem, I'm going to get some money to fix it in my, in my yard. It's not that. It's if there are areas in the city where large numbers of property owners are affected or big geographical areas are affected. Maybe involving dozens of people. That I, what I would like to see is that the 150,000 we set aside in the current year budget separate from ARPA to fund the study. Maybe we could find a contractor who could identify for us, you know, here are eight areas like that around the city. Here are solutions we could do to address that and then working together potentially for those residents on the. Here are solutions we could do to address that, and then working together, potentially those residents on their own, but potentially if it's um apartment building. Management firms that they could work on, maybe the city could find a way to support it. But I don't feel like at this point, we know what, what the is yet is. And so as I mentioned, I think last week, I'd like to see us try to find a way to move forward with that study. And Ms. Braithwaite mentioned, like a lot of these things, and I understand that there's staff capacity issues. So I really do want to pursue. An approach there to see if we can work with people in the community and some of the council members to try to find a way to, to move forward on that. Just a couple of the quick things. Um, I would like to see more on the business grants, as others have talked about, as I've mentioned before. On the community connectors, it seems like a big number for something that's a little bit unclear to me, and would only be a, a two-year pilot. I'd much rather try to focus more on the navigator and ambassador approach that we tried to fund at a much lower level. Again, this is, but and see where we've gone on that. Um, on the, uh, on the traffic study, I'm a little skeptical too, just because it sounds like if I understood the discussion correctly tonight. That we can't do anything through that on our state highways, and it's my impression, number one, not that there are safety issues throughout the city, but the biggest ones are on the state highways. And I'm just not sure what we get out of it if we leave those out, and I could, perhaps I could be talked into that. On the Maple Avenue um complete streets, we haven't talked about that at all tonight. I'm open to doing that, again, with, with the um. Caveat about the construction that I mentioned last time, not having that take place at the same time as if we do end up doing the uh atrium in the library. But I really want us to just drop the uh upper Maple or, or South Maple component of that. Because in the, in the community meetings we had on that, there was very little support for that up there and not much benefit from it. And I think it'd be preferable just to do it on the lower, wider part of Maple. And then the last thing is, and this is just a general observation, I have no idea if my colleagues will agree with me, I mentioned this before, but I feel like a number of these things. The mental health piece, um, increased aid for, for businesses, some of the housing programs, and, and there are a number of others. Are really ready to go. We can get them not literally out the door. We could, we could approve those in the next two weeks easily. Others feel like they still need some more information, so I'm still in my mode of thinking of doing this in, in two components and in two separate. Sections, one in February and one a little bit later, not, not much later, no later than when we receive the next tranche of the half of the money that we're going to get. And if, if that seems problematic, maybe we could even do something where we say, we're approving these, and in our accompanying resolution, we say, and we think we're going to approve all these. And these amounts subject to a second round of votes or something along those lines. But I really feel like if we tried to do them all at once, I'm hearing a lot about staff capacity. I totally sympathize with it. We tried to do them all at once. I'm just afraid we won't do any of them quickly enough, and I'd much rather do the urgent immediate ones first. I've said versions of that before. I'm sorry to subject my colleagues to that again, but I'll be thinking about if there's a way to do that when we take this up um in our upcoming meetings. And I will end my solo queue there.
Okay. Um, just going under our new procedures, we are trying to finish our meetings at eleven o'clock, and so I will take Councilwoman DiBala. Um, and then I will have, I, I will offer my own comments, and then we will wrap this up and wrap up our meeting. So Councilwoman DiBala.
Thank you for letting me uh. Address some of the other points. I figured everybody else would hit most of my comments, so um I don't have a whole lot left. Um, just buzzing through the things we heard tonight. Thank you so much for the additional research. And the, the thought that got, that went into these proposals. It, it really helped to hear them crystallized like that. That said, I think I am more uh inclined at this point toward using the one point two million for a combination of partnerships. In community navigators or connectors rather than direct assistance, but I want to hear the answers to some of the other questions that already got raised. I'm also, as much as I feel we need a traffic, a citywide traffic study, I'm not seeing it under ARPA at this moment. On stormwater, um, what, what they all said. Uh, I was thinking uh also about a more. An approach that, that focuses on groups of, groups of, areas of problems and groups of folks rather than individual homeowners. Particularly using ARPA money, because again, back to what Councilmember Siemens said, focusing on the, uh, on the, the purpose of this. Which is to help the folks in our community who need the help. Um, who are the most impacted by COVID, either through their work or their business or their home, or their. When their, their housing, the food, you know, all of that. So, so that's, that's my reaction to, to the things that have been talked about tonight very briefly. And um looking to next week, I had perhaps misunderstood who we were going to do night. Um, and I had uh identified four or five places for the. Proposals that we talked about last week, where I wanted not so much to talk about shifting money, but to talk about focus or targeting. So that, that we are all clear about what it is we're funding. Or um what, what it is we're, we're trying, we're about. So on the questions and answers, there was a lot of clarification of what the actual proposals were. So I can write that down and circulate it, and then we can look for consensus on, on the focus of some of the projects that we talked about last week. Because I think there is focus. Um, we don't have to do that tonight, but, but that's, that's something that I'd like to. I'd like to pursue next week before we talk about moving money around, because I'm. Um, I'm having, I'm still having a little trouble with how much money we need to do certain things versus certain other things, and some of that is the scope. Um, I want to point out to folks just a question I asked in the question and answer that we did not talk about as a new proposal. Um, I had asked about the need, the continuing need for staff PPE and what that would cost. Um, and whether we needed to allocate any of the ARPA money for it. And then there was a, a, a related question about, I think it was Councilmember Smith, about the cost of masks for residents, not staff. Um, and so uh not to belabor that tonight, but for those of you who have that also in the corner of your mind there. There's some information in the, in the Q and As about, about that as a potential new proposal. And, and I'm not prepared to propose anything at this point. Um, and I think that's it for me for now. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilwoman DiBala. Um, I'll go through um quickly um my notes just on stormwater. Just to say I'm on board with Councilmember Kovar and DiBala in saying like. Um, I, I think the way we've been talking about stormwater, private, on private property um projects started last year. When we did our um council priorities, and then we did the budget to set aside things. It was thinking about one or two, or maybe even three uh larger projects um in the community. Uh, we had talked about, you know, an overall look at um stormwater needs in the community. And then where were there areas where there were residents who are ready to, who have already been organizing and ready to come together to do a, a project? So I, you know, I do think that was council's intent um and thinking about some of the stormwater projects on private property. So I don't know if that changes at all. I, I very much hear the director, um, Ms. Braithwaite talking about staff capacity and other things. But I, I do think it's important that we clarify that that was the direction of council and not looking to, you know, replicate a, um, a, a program like the county does. Um, I also support if we can find the money as we're doing our, our, the chart to um increase the business grants. Um, and I would like to know if it is possible before next week, as Councilmember Smith brought up, to get more information about what may be covered under an infrastructure bill. And grants on that, and whether or not it, it does make sense just to put some of the things like the Maple Avenue project or other things that maybe. Um, be able to get money under an infrastructure grant um in a different category for right now. On the um mental health um services, I'm, I'm also curious with, like, I agree with Councilwoman Kostick and a number of the residents who said. Depending on how we structure this, if we could um look at like how this may not be housed in our um police department. Um, however, knowing that this is, given the timing of things, and again, like all the moving pieces with our conversations of Adventist healthcare. I just wanted to think that through a little bit, and maybe we need, we need to start this. Um, it's urgent. Um, it may need to um start in a certain place, but just thinking about how the pilot goes, but keeping in mind where um the mental health services may end up. Um, I want to keep that in mind. Um, in addition, I know the police chief, um, the conversations we had, I don't know if it come, if we need to add money. Um, to this item, if we do add in the proposal that was done um for, um, particularly for young people's mental health. So if we could get an answer for that, if we need to, it, um, to actually add that, if we wanted to. Um, because that is, again, as I mentioned, something that came up with the um conversation we have at the principals. Um, and I'd be interested in, in particularly adding that component um to the mental health services. Um, regarding guaranteed income versus a one-time um payment. Um, in my mind, I always thought about if we did the guaranteed income project, we would be partnering um with some type of institution like. Um, gee, the researchers at GW or, or someone else um to do that, because given the administration of the project um and other things. So um, I don't know if uh, you know, we don't have that much time um to uh figure this all out. But um, but just to say that that has, that was in my mind, um, in particular, as we look at the difference between like doing a guaranteed income or a direct payment. Um, and on the traffic study, you know, I, Councilwoman Kostick and I see a real need for this. I understand um there may be um other urgent needs that we want to address. But I, I do also see um doing a comprehensive citywide traffic study in some way as really addressing the equity issues. Because right now, um, the way we're approaching um traffic issues um is not really equitable across our community. And there, um, this was raised by our, uh, the Safe Roadways Committee and others. Um, as things that we need to look at in terms of um our processes in the city and who even, you know, can petition for um traffic calming or things like that. So I, I do believe it does have um an equity component um to it, to look across the city. But I also hear my colleagues, and perhaps that is um in a different category and not as urgent at this moment as we're looking at all of the um. The needs for uh the ARPA funds. Um, and I think those are all my notes. Um, so um, I don't know if staff has anything else they need us to do in order to prepare for um next week.
No, I, I think it's, it's all covered. Uh, council will be receiving the reconciliation spreadsheet for you to be able to review over the next week. Uh, and we'll just be prepared to go through each of the projects and uh try to get to a place where we can all have consensus on what the spending plan is going to look like.
All right. Um, anyone else have any questions or anything? No, I just want to say thank you again to the staff um for putting this information together. Um, and uh, thank you again to all the residents who came out and spoke this evening. So, thank you everyone. Have a good evening, and we'll be back next Wednesday. We're adjourned.